Okay. No, yeah.
David, you ready for the, you ready for the pledge allegiance?
Absolutely. If I was.
Sounds good. And, um. I, I hate to leave her out, but we're gonna go ahead and get started here.
She's coming in now.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If we can have a roll call, please.
Yes, council member Bagby.
Present.
Council member Brigham.
Here.
Council member Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here. Would everyone please join me in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Report out a closed session, please.
Mayor, there was an item under a closed session of existing litigation. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Conflicts of interest. Is there any conflict of interest that anyone would like to declare at this time?
I won't be adding, I won't be discussing with you guys the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
And, and if I may, if I may add just a couple more details on, on that mayor. And that is the item related to the urgency ordinance, providing temporary standards. That's item 14. And just for the record, council member Brigham does not have any type of permit or anything like that for any of housing under that ordinance. I think that her, her recusal is simply for just perception issues, given that she didn't vote on it before, because I think one of her neighbors has a permit, or she assisted one of her neighbors. That's not a, I don't think that's a, that's not a legal conflict. We'll keep assessing it, of course. And if the council decides to bring an ordinance forward for consideration, we'll work with council member Brigham to make sure that there are no conflict issues at that point. But for the record, the recusal is just more an abundance of caution, more for perception issues. Hopefully, I covered that, council member.
Yes, thank you.
I think so.
Agenda review. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, members of council, staff does recommend one change to the agenda. And that's in regards to item number 16, the last item under new business that is regarding the home leadership council of Sonoma County. The speaker for that item, Mr. Don Schwartz, the assistant city manager for Runner Park, is not available later this evening, so I'm recommending we move that up as the first item after the, the two proclamations on your agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. And now let's move to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that should not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. Please remember that the city council will not respond to these items as they are not agendized. Does anyone have any public comment they'd like to make? Irene, I see one hand up somewhere.
Yes, so Mr. Wayne, you should be able to speak.
Okay, now you should be able to hear me.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Wayne Diggs. I live on Sonoma Drive in Clover Springs. Mr. Mayor and members, good evening, and thank you for making this time available. Hopefully, in your packet is a letter that I wrote on behalf of the 12 homes on Sonoma Drive regarding the danger that in of fire in the open space. What we're seeing in the last year or two is more and more fallen trees directly adjacent to well-used trails. These fallen trees will, are dying or are dead, several of them are very dead. And these fallen trees just provide additional fuel should a fire start, which will make it much more difficult for the fire department to put the fire out. We all know that the less fuel and the less debris laying on the ground in a forest, the easier it is to put the fires out. I don't know if the city or the open space district or who, I, I, I don't know who is responsible for maintenance up there. I don't think it's the open space. I think they just simply did the work and the city paid them to do it. And I'm urging the city to send someone from the fire department up there and have a look at the, at the fuel on the floor of the forest, especially next to the most heavily used trails. There are, there have been two benches installed up there through donations. And it's not unusual, although it doesn't happen all the time, but it's not unusual to find cigarette butts at the, under these, these benches. So we would, we would like you to try and have a look at this. I know that, you know, that you've got a lot of other things that are on your mind, but we all know what wildfires can do. We've seen the terrible tragedy. And those of us that have the open space directly in our backyard are pretty concerned about trying to do everything we can to reduce the fire danger. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Wayne. Are there any other public comments, Irene?
No other public comments, Chair, excuse me, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to proclamations. I've asked council member Cruz to please make the proclamation for Latino Heritage Month. So council member Cruz, if you'd like to read that proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I want to acknowledge that Lupe from Family Apartments, where this proclamation will be displayed later on, I think she's on the call. Okay, proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale proclaiming September 15th, 2020 through October 15th as Latino Heritage Month. Whereas in 1968, President Lyndon B. Johnson first recognized Hispanic Heritage Week. Later, this was expanded to one month. And each successive president has continued this tradition, declaring September 15th through the, through October 15th to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Governor Gavin Newsom issued a proclamation Sunday, September 15th, declaring September 15th to October 15th, 2020 as Latino Heritage Month in the state of California. And whereas Sonoma County has a long history of welcoming immigrants and is home to growing multi-ethnic and multicultural Latino populations, including Cloverdale, which has grown over the past several years to now represent 31.1% of our citizens, approximately 2879 people. And whereas the diverse Latino population of the county of Sonoma makes a significant economic contribution and has many profound positive influences on our community through strong commitment to family, faith, education, hard work, vibrant culture, and service. And whereas for over the past decades, Sonoma County Latino organizations and businesses have continued to foster the culture and traditions to our communities by being active community members and focusing on the areas of education, health, wellness, and the local economy and public service. Whereas the city council of the city of Cloverdale is in deep appreciation to the diverse Latino population of our community and urge all citizens to join us during Latino Heritage Month in celebrating these extraordinary communities and their role in our county. Now therefore, there be proclaimed by Mayor Gus Walter, September 15th through October 15th as Latino Heritage Month in the city of Cloverdale. Thank you, Lupe, and thank you for acknowledging our community.
Thank you, council member Cruz. Council members, any comments before I open it up for the public? Okay, Irene, is there any comments from the public?
No hands are raised at this time.
All right, well, once again, council member Cruz, thank you, and thank you for getting it over to the Cloverdale Family Apartments. Next is a proclamation proclaiming September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And city manager Kelly, are you gonna read that proclamation? But before you do, is there anyone here to accept that proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, we have counselor Laurie from Washington Middle School.
Okay, thank you. David?
Mayor, members of council, I'd be honored to read the proclamation. The proclamation is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale proclaiming the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awareness around the issues of suicide prevention, teaching how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, or background. And whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death amongst young people. And whereas the city of Cloverdale, California is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, park leaders, or pack leaders and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are on the front lines of a battle that many refuse to discuss in public. And whereas the youth of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that, reminder that we are all fighting our own battles. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Cloverdale encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Gus Walter does hereby proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Cloverdale, here ordered September 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, David. Council members, any comments before I turn it over to the public? Colleen, Irene, would you please unmute Colleen?
I think I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I can't see myself, so it's a little different. Well, hello, good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to accept this on behalf of Cloverdale School District. My name's Colleen Lurie, and I'm the school counselor at Washington Middle School. Over the summer, I was blessed with. Uh oh.
Sorry, Colleen. Okay, we should be able to hear you again.
Okay, hold on, I gotta, something's going off my computer right now, the woes of online. Here we go, all right, here we go. Over the summer, I was blessed with the opportunity to support the mental health of our students by creating the district's very first mental wellness committee, which is geared towards building a collaborative community and providing resources, information, and education to our students and families on mental health and wellness. And now more than ever before, it seems, we're working tirelessly to make sure our students are being supported in all three domains of their lives, their academics, their college and career readiness, but most importantly, their personal and social emotional development, which includes addressing important issues such as suicide prevention. One of the ways we provide this is by working together as a school community to present, engage, and educate our students and families on ways to support each other when we really do need it the most. As a representative of this community and the school district, I can promise you that we will continue to work together and bring awareness to national suicide prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Council members, anything else? Okay, then let's move on to the next item, which is presentation by Sonoma, I'm sorry, which is item number 16, which is, and excuse me as I flip through my agenda packet here, which is the, which is the discussion on the home Sonoma County regarding the homelessness in Sonoma County. And David, that's your item. I know Don is here, but would you like to talk about it first?
Sure, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I'll, I'll introduce this item, and then I'll like to turn it over to Mr. Don Schwartz. Don is the assistant city manager for the city of Runner Park. But more importantly, relative to this particular agenda item, he is the small cities of Sonoma County representative on what's referred to as the Home Sonoma County Leadership Council. The action that we're asking council to take tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter addressed to Home Sonoma County Leadership Council. The mayor of Santa Rosa, Mr. Tom Schwedholm, is currently the chair of the Leadership Council. The intent of the letter is to reflect the city's position on a number of key matters related to, particularly the governance structure for the Leadership Council. We'd like to articulate that the, the council should include at least one seat from each jurisdiction, including the city of Cloverdale. That we'd also like to consider a funding model that considers, you know, each of the city's participation in supporting that Leadership Council and its role as overseeing the continuum of care and, and, uh, funding for homelessness within the county. And that the, it'd be, the, the, the process be supported by a manageable advisory structure of experts on the matter of homelessness. And last but not least, to really align funding allocations from the federal and state government as well as Sonoma County for, in, in support of countywide homeless goals and initiatives. Last but not least, we're also asking council to weigh in on appointing a council member to join an ad hoc committee with representatives from other cities to collaborate on making changes to Home Sonoma County. So this matter is, again, related to the ongoing governance of homelessness in Sonoma County. And I'm gonna turn it over to, to Don Schwartz. Don's gonna kind of walk you through, give you a little bit of background on, on, on the Leadership Council, and then speak to the requested actions this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwartz. Don?
Thank you, David, and thank you, Mayor and council, for having me this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the leadership issues with homelessness in Sonoma County. And let's see, I'm going, if we could go to the next slide, I guess we'll do it that way, it's fine. So I'm gonna do a bit of background and then bring you to the current situation. So there's a federal requirement for regional governance. The body is generically called the continuum, excuse me, the continuum of care. And historically in Sonoma County, that's been led by nonprofit service providers primarily. And the federal and state funding decisions, meaning the allocation of the federal and state dollars that came to Sonoma County were made by those nonprofits. So there was certainly the potential real or perceived for a conflict of interest. There's also a situation where local government is being held responsible for addressing an issue, but without the authority to make the key policy or funding decisions. Also, historically, most other funding, there are, most cities put in some money, and the county puts in a, particularly about 600,000 a year to programs. But most of that was not coordinated with a regional perspective. It was, we do a lot of this one-off, and so it's, it's highly fragmented in terms of policymaking and funding allocation. Next slide, please. So two years ago, the, the previous governing body went away and Home Sonoma County was formed. It was designed by an ad hoc committee from the Board of Supervisors in Santa Rosa, and it did not include medium or small cities at the table. The notion being that we're represented by the Board of Supervisors, which, and how funding is allocated, that, that makes some sense. And the service providers were to remain deeply involved in advisory function and with some seats on the board, and I'll explain that in a minute. So if we go to the next slide. And the roles of this body include countywide policy setting, issues such as a housing first, getting people housed permanently as the overall goal and approach to ultimately solve the problem, addressing encampments, how are we gonna do that consistently? Setting priorities for accessing shelters, that's another policy issue for this body. Another role, excuse me, would be to align and unify funding decisions as much as possible. And then overall, to kind of own the issue of homelessness, excuse me. Let's go to the next slide. So the chart here shows you the governance body of Home Sonoma County as it exists today. Has a nine-member Leadership Council, 25-member Technical Advisory Committee, and then numerous task groups below it. I think there's seven altogether, if I'm doing my math right. So that's the current governance body. Go to the next slide. I'm gonna focus on the Leadership Council, the decision-making body. The nine members include two board members from the Board of Supervisors, Supervisors Hopkins and Goran, two Santa Rosa council members, Mayor Schwedholm and council member Olivares, council member McDonald from Petaluma, and then four representatives appointed on two-year terms from the Technical Advisory Committee to provide a balanced perspective of, of outside experts, I think is the intent. Two of those right now are people who have lived experience. There's always a requirement to have at least one, but we have two now. One is Mark Krug from Burbank Housing, is a nonprofit housing developer. And then I'm the other one, have the honor of serving as the medium and small city representatives. That was suggested by the city managers. It was not something that I volunteered for as much as was voluntold for. But the important point here is that there's no permanent representation for the other cities on this body. So we'll go to the next slide. Over the last approaching two years, some developments. About a year ago, the Leadership Council voted six to one against a seat. For the other cities, I was the one, but we were told no. There was some openness to the possibility. In February, as you may remember, the mayors and council members met and supported a greater role for cities on the Leadership Council, as well as creating a new lead agency that would report to the Leadership Council and not the county. Lead agency now is the county's Community Development Commission. They report, well, right now, it's to the Health Department, at least, I, I think that'll eventually be a permanent basis, but on an interim basis officially. And the county staff are, in, in many people's perspectives, mine included, you know, the people who, they truly respond to are the Board of Supervisors, because that's who hires them and, you know, writes their paychecks. And, and so the Leadership Council is, is secondary to that. But also a year ago, the county and some Leadership Council members have become more supportive. But also, a year ago, the county, uh, and some Leadership Council members have become more supportive, uh, to having an increased role for all of the cities. So, next slide. The Technical Advisory Committee has not met this year, that twenty-five-member group, and so many of them have expressed concern about their limited roles. And I, I have to acknowledge that COVID has certainly been a, been a factor in this, but, um, I, I'm not convinced that's the only reason. Um, the county's provided inadequate staff support, that includes pre-pandemic. And I, I think they frankly would acknowledge that, um, they're, they don't get sufficient federal and state funding to cover the cost to do this right, and that's, that's no fault of their own. They've put in a little bit of general fund, uh, maybe a couple hundred thousand to, uh, help provide some staff support, but it, it's been lacking. Um, they established an internal county outreach team, uh, independent of the Leadership Council. Uh, they did this on their own, and they are essentially taking over the official front door, uh, for folks experiencing homelessness, or it's called coordinated entry. And that's something that, you know, it's a core part of the homeless, uh, ser-, service system, but they unilaterally said they're gonna do that, just like they unilaterally said we're gonna create this outreach team. Um, so they're making some unilateral decisions, even though Leadership Council's supposed to be the policymaking body. And as I mentioned, they appear to move homelessness, that role, to the Health Department. So, if we go to the next slide. Some other developments, um, the fragmented funding decisions remain, um, and cities make our own, the county, um, puts some of their money into the broader pool, makes a lot of decisions on their own. Um, there's a ballot measure coming up to address mental health and homelessness issues, and the county proposes to retain full control of all those dollars, including those to address homelessness, so can, would continue fragmented funding in, in that way. Uh, the county has proposed a new governance structure, which I'll show you in a moment. And they also claim the authority to decide on changes to the governance structure. Now, this is a new development as of today, um, I'll get to a little bit later, but they say that they get to be the ones who decide, um, on any changes to the, to the structure of membership, seats for cities, et cetera. Let's go to the next slide. So this is the county's proposal. It would be an eighteen-member Leadership Council, uh, two from the Board of Supervisors, two from the city of Santa Rosa, two from Petaluma, one from each of the other, uh, cities, so Cloverdale would have a seat, uh, two members with lived experience, and then three from the county's municipal advisory committees or the unincorporated areas. And the rationale behind that is, giving you an example, the best example is, uh, Gurnville, for example, has one of the larger homeless populations in the county. And if the West County Supervisor was not on the board, uh, the Leadership Council, then they would be unrepresented. Um, and then, there's also representatives from, uh, your part of the world, North County, as well as the Sonoma Valley area. So they're suggesting there'd be seats for, for each of them. Um, and then they've also proposed the task groups, uh, below on a coordinated entry, Consumer Committee, Youth Action Board, Evaluation, and Performance and Evaluation. If you go to the next slide, please. So what we're recommending, um, and I think David's recommendations, recommendations are consistent with those that, uh, most other cities have adopted who have considered this issue, is that the governance structure include one seat per jurisdiction on the Leadership Council. Uh, that's a tradition or a practice that we form and, and follow in most cases, Sonoma Power, the Waste Management Agency, um, for example. That, um, we consider, the cities consider funding a lead agency reporting to the Leadership Council, but no longer report to the Board of Supervisors. But we have to look at what, what it might cost and, and, and all that. But, you know, the, the cities do benefit from this, and they are under, the, the county is underfunded from federal and state sources, so some other local money, it seems potentially appropriate. That we have a manageable advisory structure, that twenty-five-member Technical Advisory Committee is, is just frankly too unwieldy. Um, in the meantime, re-, very recently, St. Joseph's has offered to evaluate some legal questions that are before us, as well as the options for a new lead agency. Um, they'd hire a third party, some knowledgeable, knowledgeable consultants, who would look at what the scope would be, what its roles would be, um, how many staff it should have, what it would cost, how we would allocate those costs, and, and that sort of thing. So they're offering to pay for that, because the CDC doesn't have the money to do it. So that's a, a kind offer on their behalf. And the other policy position is to better align funding, um, starting with all the federal and state money that comes to the county should be, go through the Leadership Council. Right now, the county controls a good chunk of that, and, and it just builds this fragmented system. Um, let's go to the next slide. So the next steps, um, is authorize the mayor to send a letter with these policy positions. Um, the one I would suggest adding, that I don't think is in the draft, is to endorse the St. Joseph's offer to, uh, fund this independent third-party study, to appoint a council member to the ad hoc committee, um, with other cities, so we can get feedback and input from cities more readily than trying to come to each council. And also would be elected officials, um, and not just staff, um, you know, weighing in on these matters. And then the Leadership Council, we're actually meeting tomorrow, uh, to discuss this issue. Now, let me throw you the curveball that we found out about today. Um, I mentioned a while back that the county says it has the authority to make decisions on changes to the Leadership Council. They approved those changes that were made two years ago when Home Sonoma County was formed. Well, there's an opinion now from County Council itself that that was not a valid action, that in fact, the county does not have the unilateral authority to make that decision. The governing body has that authority. So in some sense, that means that the current Leadership Council can change itself. But going back, it means that we were formed inappropriately. So, how that plays out going forward, I really can't tell you. I think we'll have some conversation about that tomorrow. The old, the old Continuum of Care governing body may essentially be back in, in the decision-making, uh, position. Um, they basically immediately, um, we have to, have to sort this out, probably get some input from, from HUD, the federal governing body. So, um, I just saw that, uh, today, a memo from County Council, it's part of our agenda tomorrow. So my recommendation now, I think David and I talked about this briefly, is to continue down the recommended path. No matter what happens, having the cities on record as to what your policy preferences are will be important to whatever formation of a new Leadership Council happens, an indication of your interest in potentially funding something, um, your interest in a new lead agency, these are kind of core issues that, no matter what happens or who makes the decisions, it's important for you to weigh in and, and let your desires, uh, be known. So, um, I think the recommendations, uh, stand, um, with potentially adding that one endorsement or offer, suggest an offer, St. Joseph's, uh, take St. Joseph's off, on their offer. And with that, if I haven't, uh, I'm happy to answer questions, and I hope I haven't too thoroughly confused, it's, uh, it's a pretty complicated issue.
Don, thank you. Um, it is complicated. Council members, before I open it up to the public and then bring it back, uh, for final decision, do you have any comments?
I have a question. Um, do we remember if it's St. Joseph's that's also looking to acquire Healdsburg Hospital?
It is.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Let me find, here it says, um, let's see, whether to decide if the city should consider whether to contribute to the cost to fund an effective lead agency that reports to the Home Sonoma County Leadership Council. Does that mean that we have to pay something done?
Well, the, potentially. There's no commitment right now. Um, but the fact that it's not adequately funded, and it does need more staff, the county is putting in more staff, they're, said that right now. Now, I think that's funded partly on one-time money, so, you know, I'm not sure how long-term a commitment that is. Um, but potentially. But I also, at least for, I think most cities feel like if we're putting money in, then we need to have a seat at the table, and we need a lead agency that doesn't report to the county, but reports, like every other JPA, this might not be a JPA, but, you know, the standard in this county is you report to a governing body with every city represented on it. So, how much the ask would be, um, and even if there definitively will be an ask, is a little, is unclear at this moment. That's part of why we would do the study, uh, like the idea of the study with St. Joseph's, it would help us get a better handle on, on what the amount would be and, and how that might be divvied up.
Well, I, I would think the cost would be per capita anyhow, which, um, it, it could be significant, but, you know, even for Little Cloverdale, it would be a lot.
You know, I've, I've run some preliminary numbers, um, for Rona Park, and you know, for a very minimally-staffed agency, we're talking in the seventy, seventy-five thousand dollar a year neighborhood, but that is so full of uncertain assumptions that I almost hesitate to mention it, and I certainly wouldn't bank on it in any, in any way. And that's really for a minimally-staffed agency, so. Um, and that, that's again, why we want, uh, I, I'm just very grateful that St. Joseph's has offered to do this, um, analysis. I'm expecting, I'm hoping that the Leadership Council gives an indication tomorrow that it's something we would like to have done. They, they don't want to undertake the effort if nobody's gonna pay attention to the results, so I'm hoping the council agrees tomorrow, Leadership Council agrees tomorrow, that yes, this is something we would like to see done, um, and, and proceeds. I think it's very kind of them to make that offer.
I think that, uh, the amount that, uh, cities will have to contribute, or, or, um, county areas that will have to contribute, it's, um, would it be based on, uh, population, uh, budgets? Because regardless of how much it costs, not all, um, cities have the resources to pay, um.
So that's, um, how, how it would be divided up, and how much it would be, that's why we would have the ad hoc to advise on the process. So for example, this is an issue. In my professional career, I have never seen as many people interested in participating in the process. And whether it be through committees or speaking at, at meetings, um, it, it's just an, it can be an incredibly involved process, people like to be there. That's how I think we ended up with a twenty-five-member Technical Advisory Committee. It costs a lot of money to staff that and seven subcommittees, that's pretty close to a full-time job. We don't have to have something that large and cumbersome and expensive. I mean, and we value public input and, but there's other ways you can get it without having something that, that large. And so, to me, we would, that's one of the points of weighing in, it's, you can have more of this, but it's gonna cost you an extra hundred thousand dollars a year, which maybe per city is some percentage of that, is that something you want to do or not want to do? And that's why we like the idea of the ad hoc to weigh in on those things on behalf of all of the cities, um, as, as we negotiate this, uh, this future. And eventually, yeah, it would, it would have to come to each city council to actually appropriate the funds, so there's no, no, nobody has a power to commit a full city council, um, but that's, that's what we're suggesting.
And Mayor, members of council, if I can, just weigh in on the, on the funding issue. Uh, there are a number of existing funding sources that address the issue of homelessness. Uh, most specifically, I'm thinking about Community Development Block Grant Funds, and, and the county has made an effort to try to re-, redirect those funds, you know, towards, uh, towards homelessness. And, you know, a portion of those funds certainly are based on the population of Cloverdale. So, you know, that's something I think requires additional analysis, because it may very well be that some of that CDPG funding could be directed, you know, specifically to supporting, uh, you know, goals and objectives that come out of Leadership Council for homelessness. So, uh, you know, I, I think it, it comes very complex very quickly. Uh, and we, we don't want to burden ourselves with a, a lot of extra, uh, funding requirements. So, you know, the, the study and evaluation will be, will be a critical step to look at how we might fund a new lead, new lead agency. But again, with, with that, that also gives the, uh, council the opportunity to participate directly in governance and ensuring that some of those funds that are invested yeah, in, in, into this new lead agency also help to support, uh, homeless initiatives that address homelessness within and around the Clo-, the Cloverdale community. So, it, you know, you could look at it like a return, uh, an ROI, uh, on your investment by contributing to a governance structure, again, assuming that, that that's, after further analysis, that ultimately is what, what is recommended, is an individual contribution by, by each city.
Thank you, thank you, David. Um, Don, just, just a question. At our last city council meeting, uh, St. Joseph's gave a presentation, um, well, it wasn't St. Joseph's, actually, it was the Healdsburg, uh, Hospital. St. Joseph's, I guess, was going to be, um, making them an offer, uh, to help them out in their current financial situation. Now, St. Joseph's is here, uh, offering to help, uh, with some legal opinions. Wh-, what, what's their, uh, skin in the game? What, what's in this for them? You know?
Well, I, I have a pretty good sense, but I'm, I would say this is a knowledgeable guess as opposed to something definitive. But I, I talked to, um, somebody from St. Joseph's today, as a matter of fact, and he said, if we don't address homelessness, it has severe financial consequences for them, because their, their healthcare, a first resort is the emergency room. And people have really severe needs when, when they get to that point. Um, there's absolutely, people become homeless in part because of health issues or mental health issues, addiction issues, but they exacerbate those issues the longer they're out on the streets. So, to the extent we can get our arms around this problem and get people housed or prevent them from becoming, uh, homeless, the better off we're all going to be. It'll be less impact on hospitals, less on public safety, less on the courts and criminal justice system, place and fire, it's, it's one of those things. And so that's what's in it for them, is fewer people showing up on their doorstep that they're gonna need to take care of, um, in a very costly manner.
Okay. Councilmember Turner, please.
Yeah, just one last little follow-up question to that. Um, I, I was made aware of, for the first time, through some concerns from my colleagues, that there's some sort of ethics that go along with the care that can be associated with religious connotations. And I think I remember hearing you say that they're looking to hire a third party anyway. Um, but that just came to mind, are, are we pretty confident that it would be, uh, for lack of a better term, an unbiased study? And, and really give just all aspects of the, uh, point of view?
I have a really high degree of confidence that they would do that. I know of some firms that are, from little I know about them, but people of my respect who know them well, are highly capable of doing this work in a credible way. Um, so, you know, how, they, they have not specified and said, we want to use this particular consultant or contractor. Um, but I'm, and, and part of the, the, the notion of St. Joseph's funding this is that it's not funded by the cities, it's not funded by the county, it's truly gonna be an independent opinion. Part of it's on legal issues, and part of it is on, I think the more robust part will be on the, what are the options for a lead agency? What are best practices and scope, cost, that, that sort of thing? I, I have a lot of confidence that there's people out there that can do a credible, independent job on this. I also expect the Leadership Council to appoint an ad hoc of our own to deal with this, um, to, to sort of help with the selection or, or provide input. At least, I hope that happens. And if, if we don't exist because the old Leadership Council version comes in place, then maybe we'll just do it as sort of interested residents. Um, I think St. Joseph's is very interested in making sure this work proceeds, so long as there's interest in the results.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate that.
You're most welcome. By the way, one other thing I might mention about St. Joseph's. In their email to the Leadership Council, they not only offered to fund this analysis, they said, I mean, they didn't say it's quite explicitly, but it's very implicit in there that they potentially would offset some of the ongoing costs of Leadership Council. That they realize having a strong backbone organization that uses data for decisions and that, you know, kind of runs a, a solid ship is in their interest as well. So, you know, I wouldn't say that offer is definitively there, but they raised that possibility. I think that speaks to the seriousness with which they're approaching this.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Bag-, Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I guess I just would want to comment, you know, we've, um, we've certainly heard the presentation about them, um, you know, offering to buy out Healdsburg Hospital. We've also applied for some of their, um, their grants, and, you know, they're a very well-endowed foundation who, you know, unlike some other, you know, healthcare organizations, they actually put their money where their mouth is. And they are trying to get money into the hands of, you know, regional bodies like this, um, where they can really make a difference on the ground. So, um, you, you know, I don't, I, I also, I also, you know, was able to read between the lines of that email and realize, uh, I'm sure a lot of folks on that list contributed to the content, it's just that, that they had the staff time, and again, the resources to, to put that, um, that email together, which I just wanted to tell Don, it's like, yeah, you know, we've, Don and I have been talking about this issue for a couple of years. And it, um, is very complicated, but that was, um, that email from, um, St. Joseph's, Joseph's really did crystallize and explain the, the, the barriers to getting where we need to be. Um, and I, I thought that it was very well thought out, and I'm very appreciative of their, their offer to, again, put their money where their mouth is and support an effort to reorganize, um, this, this, um, the governance- their mouth is and support an effort to reorganize this, this, the governance structure so that it can actually, you know, achieve the goal we want, which is to get to functional zero in this county. But my, my, my question is kind of a rephrasing of what David said earlier. Don, it's, it sounds like if we want to, I'm going to put this in very simple terms. It sounds like if we want to get the money and resources that we are paying for in our tax dollars and that we are entitled to, we have to have a seat at the table. And is, am I interpreting that? And we're going to have to, we're going to have to probably put money up to, for the governance structure in order to get the resources that we are entitled to in Cloverdale in the North County. Do I, do I have that straight?
I would like to say you don't. Because geographic equity of funding has been something that we have been pounding the table on for a long time, particularly because in my opinion, the two supervisors are super heavily focused on their districts.
Yeah.
The reality is, I think you do need representation there. In the last round of funding allocations in the spring or so, maybe it was before then, the staff came in and recommended allocations based on the prior year. And there's a, it's a little bit of confusing to explain, so I won't try and explain it all. But the bottom line is North County was shortchanged.
Yeah.
Did not get, and, and I, I fought the fight that I thought I could win that day, which was to get a small portion moved within the North County allocation to a use that seemed more important than what was initially proposed. But North County got shortchanged. And I don't think that would have happened, at least not as readily, if you were at the table. But I didn't think I could get the votes to change, to change that at the moment. So I went for what I could and was successful on that. But yeah.
Yeah. No, I know that you've done a great job of representing all of the small cities. So we, we do appreciate your work, Don.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Mary Ann, please.
Yeah, Don, up here, I've been working in that homeless issue for the last few years. And up here, we, in Cloverdale, we have a kind of a unique problem in that we're not only servicing a lot of the counties homeless, but even Mendocino County's homeless, because there's such a large encampment on the river that spans both of the counties. But will this, and to say we were shortchanged is such an understatement, I can't even hardly believe it. If we do go along with this, do you think it's going to make that much difference and would actually funnel anything up here? A lot of the groups that claim to be helping North County have said to me personally that they really don't come up here that much, mainly because Cloverdale's never put any money in the pot and Hillsburg did. Hillsburg ended up with most of the money. So, and Santa Rosa, of course, Petaluma. But I'm really so tired of getting shortchanged up here when in reality, we're not just taking care of our homeless, we're taking care of a lot of the county homeless. And we've never gotten recognition about that or a solution for that. So do you think that this new reorganization will make a difference if we've got somebody actually sitting at that table, which we should have had a long time ago and still don't?
I guess I would say it's our best hope. I think it will make things better. The amount of funding available, if you put everything available from every city and the county and the federal and state governments in the pot, and we've had more than we've ever had before in the last few years, is probably not enough. But I think it can make a difference. This is not a, not something that's going to be successful if you can't, you know, get to functional zero essentially, or anybody who becomes homeless and sells really quickly. I think this is a necessary but not fully sufficient step to get us in that direction. And I think it's a long, this, this is a bear of an issue. It's a long road ahead. But if we're going to get there, make significant progress, I think this is the appropriate and important next step to take. I wish I could be more optimistic than that. I don't want to oversell this. So I guess I'd stop there.
Okay. That's pretty honest. Yeah.
Thank you, Don. I see no hands out in the audience. Irene, do you see anybody wanting to speak on this issue?
Correct, Mayor. There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby, I think you summed it up nicely. You know, we, we really need to have representation here at the table. And if there's no more comments, I think there's a couple of next steps we should recommend. Authorizing the mayor to send a letter on policy positions, appointing a council member, I don't know if we have to do that this evening, to an ad hoc with other cities, and to take the offer by St. Joseph's to review all the legal matters. Don, would that make you happy if we did that today?
I, yes, yes, it would. And I would ask that if you are comfortable appointing someone to the ad hoc, we have nominees from all, Windsor has not nominated anybody, but all the rest of the cities that have considered this issue have nominated somebody. So in the best of all worlds, we'd be ready to go pretty darn quickly. And I wouldn't want to have to come back and, you know, catch somebody up or delay the start of any citywide ad hoc. You know, the other thing is, there's such uncertainty now about what the whole legal status of this is that will try and get resolved tomorrow. But I'd rather be ready to go than not.
That sounds good. Well, with that being said, council members, would someone like to represent the city of Cloverdale on this ad hoc committee?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may, I'd like to recommend Councilmember Cruz. And for a couple of very specific reasons, this issue is about going in and forming the body. And I think that with her experience of reaching out to regional entities and being able to bring resources to Cloverdale, I think right now, her participation in the Leadership Institute and the reach that that gives her, it also, I think it aligns with her work on the status of women. I just think that she's very well respected amongst the other council members and certainly among the supervisors. And she's just really good at organizing. So if she's willing to take it on, I would, I think that she would be a good candidate. And with that recommendation, I would also like to offer the item as amended by, recommended by, by Don to endorse the, the St. Joseph's offer.
Councilmember Cruz, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, it's been, it's been an interesting couple of years. And fortunately, I have been able to work with Don on Zero Waste, Sonoma. And there is a two year project that I'm engaged in with the status of women, which has to do with social services provided to women. And to, it's a two year project to find out where is it that our community is falling through the cracks? Where is it that women in Cloverdale, women in Windsor, women in Hillsburg, Geyserville, are still in need of the services that are set to be provided? And that is going to require a lot of back and forth from one agency to the other. And I think I see a lot of relationship in this that could probably become very useful in, in this entity if it were to become what Don and many others have envisioned. So I have the time, I have the energy, I have the desire, and I think I have gained a lot of knowledge and have brought several services to Cloverdale in the last couple of years that this would be something close to my heart.
Councilmembers, any objections? Anyone else want to throw their name in the hat?
No, I'm good if Martha wants to go for it.
Martha, we're here to support you. So good luck. And
I know that's what we're going to need, luck.
So, councilmembers, Councilmember Bagby made a motion. And Irene, could we have a little roll call on that, please?
We might need a second for the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Well, myself, aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. And Councilmember Cruz, we'll give you all the support you need to represent Cloverdale and make sure that we get our fair share of, of, of the funding that we need to help with the homeless issue up here in the county, in the North County. So, thank you.
And Mayor, members of council, before we move on, I just want to make sure that you support authorizing the mayor to sign the letter addressed to the Sonoma County Leadership Council. It's included on page 325 of your packet. It does reference under item number two, support for an independent analysis and review of best practices for the lead agency to be completed with funding from, from St. Joseph's. So it does include that reference in the letter. And I think it's a critical timeline for that because of the, the Leadership Council meeting scheduled, I think, this Friday.
It's tomorrow, actually.
Oh, tomorrow. Thanks.
Tomorrow, 9:00 AM.
Okay. So we'd need to get that executed tonight and probably to you, Don, or, or to Mr. Schwedhelm?
I would send it to, David, I'll make sure you have, I think I sent you the email addresses for the full Leadership Council. If I can find those, or I'll send them to Tom Schwedhelm and ask him to distribute. I guess that'd be the best. Send it to Tom and ask him to distribute would be my suggestion.
Don, I want to thank you for coming up this evening. Well, resume. Thank you for coming to Cloverdale and, and for spearheading this important project for, for the cities. With that being said, we're going to move on to the next topic. And that's item number three. And it is a presentation by Sonoma County Regional Parks on the Russian River Access between the former Preston Bridge and Mendocino County Line.
It's seven o'clock.
Dave, that's your item, I believe, to introduce?
Yes, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll introduce this item. This is a presentation from Sonoma County Regional Parks on a proposed new Russian River access between the former Preston Bridge and Mendocino County. The goal tonight is to provide feedback to county park staff who are going to present and provide an overview of this proposed project. And just for reference, the, this proposed new river park is located on the east side of the Russian River, roughly between the Mendocino County line and the Preston Bridge. The three parcels that comprise the proposed park are approximately 19.1 acres. And it, you know, the county is kicking off a planning process. And this is kind of the start of that planning process is to do a presentation to the Cloverdale City Council and get your, get your, or provide an opportunity for you to provide feedback to county staff as they engage in this, this master planning process for this new proposed river park. So I'm happy to introduce tonight Parks Manager Steve Errett. He may be joined, I'm not sure, by Parks Director Bert Whitaker. But Steve, if you're out there, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you. And you can take the presentation from there. We can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. My name is Steve Errett. I'm the Planning Manager. And with me tonight is Project Manager Mundo Meruea. And we are excited to present this informational item to the Cloverdale City Council. And thank you, City Manager Kelly. We appreciate the advanced coordination and here to talk to you about your fair share of river access from the county. And so we have enjoyed our partnership through the years on Cloverdale River Park within city limits. This project is located just outside city limits and the sphere of influence to the north. Next slide, please. I'll touch on an introduction, a little bit more about the location, provide an overview, talk about timeline, and to the extent you have time, can answer questions. The photo here shows Geysers Road on a typical weekend with all of the day use parking. And you can also see the barriers on the left of all this nice right away that looks to us like a more safe parking lot, perhaps. Next slide, please. This project is funded through our local Parks for All Measure M tax measure. This is part of the county's portion, not part of the city's portion. And we want to once again, thank the city for their strong support for parks and for working with us. And this is one of the many benefits coming back to you in the North County Regional Parks. It does not forget our northern partners. The heavy lift is coming from a grant, a $1.125 million grant underneath Prop 68, specifically the Resources Agency. And so it's, those two funding sources, actually a third park mitigation fee dollars from the unincorporated county in the North County. Next slide, please. Some of the, our project benefits, pretty darn basic here. We want safe recreational access to the river for swimming, fishing, paddling, education, interpretation, everything that's going on there right now, but minus a lot of the impacts, which are extensive right now. We want to address the safety concerns, the pollution, the litter, the dumping, the lack of restrooms, the aforementioned homeless issues and their associated impacts in this area that was mentioned regarding straddling the county line. There's also a number of other project benefits, and we really hope to explore those more with the community. But I want to make a couple of points. Right now, you drive between the two counties, Sonoma and Mendocino, it's kind of hard to notice when you go from one to the other. And this is essentially the gateway area, making the first impression on travelers going either way. And it is a heavily, heavily used area without anything really pulling it together. This section of river is incredibly scenic. There's rock outcrops, diverse vegetation, the gradient of the river is ideal for safe passive recreation, whether it's tubing or, or family pop-up tents. But it's, it's very different in character than much of the Alexander Valley, where you have wall-to-wall vineyards with just a channel in the middle. This has a lot more interest in topography. And I'll touch on that a little bit more. Next slide, please. The project location, as City Manager Kelly mentioned, is just north of town. And essentially, when Highway 101 used to cross the river, it used the Preston Bridge, which is no longer there. That is the southern terminus. And then the northern terminus is the county line. So if you're driving on 101, this is where you start lifting up in grade. And then you drop back down. You cross the county line somewhere up high. When you drop back down, you're in Mendocino County where the interchange for Geysers Road is. And I'll, I'll show a zoom in. I know this slide isn't easy to read. Next slide, please. Touch more about the, the project. Within the three different areas, we are analyzing where do we have people park? Where do we develop safe trails to connect the road on the top with the river use areas on the bottom? Where can we put restrooms? Is it appropriate for maybe some picnic facilities on the top? What type of signage and where? What type of infrastructure do we need to provide appropriate management, whether that's trash cans or some sort of security? But it's a relatively, I won't say straightforward river park, but because we have a river channel, but because we have a river channel and a narrow bend on the top, there's not a huge amount of room for development. Next slide, please. The most northern area is adjacent to Ash Creek. Next slide, please. Here is a oblique view showing a nice big wide beach. There's a, a couple trails that come off Geysers Road. This, it's maybe, oh, 40, 50 feet between the road and below. You can see Highway 101 in the lower right, and you can see the railroad in between the two, and I'll mention that the railroad in the proposed Great Redwood Trail is a separate project. Next slide, please. Here is a beach level view at Ash Creek, looking up the Russian River, and here is Councilmember Bagby climbing down these unsafe stairs on an exploratory mission with me many moons ago, over two years, I believe. Next slide, please. The middle section is not very extensive, but it still provides at least scenic qualities and possibly trail access. Next slide, please. Here's a similar overview. You can see it's not as heavily used, you know, maybe no as much trails, but there's still large right-of-way on top, still recreational and environmental benefits. Next slide, please. And a water level shot, where showing kind of the diverse landscape, where you really don't find interesting rock outcrops for fishing or whatever have you in many of the sections of the river because it's too alluvial. In this case, it's not, and provides a lot of interest. Next slide, please. And the third and last area is down by the former Preston Bridge. Next slide. And the, the bridge crossed where the arrow is, and the eastern portion is subject to the project, and the western portion was quit claimed and acquired by a neighbor. This is one of the more heavily used areas. Next slide, please. Typical Saturday, families splashing, having fun. It's a real nice deep hole there as well, and we can't wait to formalize this, this type of happiness. Next slide, please. Here's just a taste of the issues that come along with all unmanaged, unregulated, informal river access, as far as we can tell. We have tree cutting for bonfires. We have car dumping. We have graffiti on trees, graffiti on infrastructure, and not just the usual free couches and whatnot, all things we usually call wetland indicators. Next slide, please. We are currently formulating our, our formal public engagement process, and we are experimenting with doing things different and new during this COVID period. Some of the approaches will be typical, online surveys, lots of postings, small stakeholder outreach, but we're getting into more new ways of doing things with different types of interactive mapping, flyovers, maybe weblogs. We shall see. We are in contract negotiations now with a consultant, and we will be posting, once we have it nailed down, we'll be posting what our process exactly is, and our goal is to reach as many people as possible in an efficient way, and not just people who know how to use technology, but also we want to make it, the draft ideas, plans, input ways available to everybody. Next slide, please. So, we already have begun the resource studies of the biology and wetlands and species and all that good stuff. We have a boundary survey underway now, and we are expecting to execute our contract for both environmental compliance and the master plan within days, and then we'll formally launch our master plan process. So, there will be many opportunities for the city to weigh in formally into, at different stages of our, of our planning, and we're really excited to provide this kind of advanced outlook and overview of the project. The first major opportunity for community engagement we're anticipating will be this fall, ideally before Thanksgiving, and where we'll probably have extensive postings and whether it be story maps or who knows, but hopefully very soon. Our goal is to complete the master plan this winter, which would allow us to go into first phase development relatively quickly, approximately a year from now, to get all the way through construction documents, permitting, all that fun stuff. The, our current grant deadline is the spring of 2022. That may be extended because of COVID and all the other emergencies. We're watching a lot of grants get extended right now, but so far, this one has not. We'd appreciate if it does, give us a little bit more breathing room, but we're, we think we can do a great job as it is. And we're, once again, funded for at least an initial phase of construction, and typically, we build parks in phases. Our goal was to get permanent restrooms, parking, and a couple safe trails on the ground soon, as soon as we can. We are also working on immediate cleanup of a lot of the debris and trash and whatnot, as well as we expect to have portable restrooms out there within two weeks. We have just very recently taken title to, to these properties. Next slide, please. I want to open it up to questions as the, as time allows, and to thank you for working with us and being excited to provide us input and see how we can help make North County a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We're going to open it up to City Council comments, and then I'm going to open it up to the public, and then we'll bring it back to the council. Steve, I just have one quick question on the funding. You said it was a 1.52 grant? And, and I guess my question is, is that money in the bank already? Is that secured? You had mentioned delays and possible funding because of COVID, but you said you had enough to get through the initial construction? Worst-case scenario, how far would you get along on this?
Um, my connection is, I heard most of you, Mr. Mayor, let me, allow me to clarify. So, yes, we do have a approximately one and a half million dollars in hand that is secured to pay for the planning process as well as the first phase of development. We don't yet know what the cost of the entire master plan that the community may agree upon, and if it goes beyond our funding, we look forward to funding and additional phases. We have a full-time grant writer, and we're used to bringing in more money after we show what we do with the money we have.
And, and that first phase, where is that on the, on the timetable? Yeah, I don't see anything that says actually first phase. So, so is it the design and environmental?
We would, we hope to build the, to build the first phase of improvements about one year from now.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Perhaps we should give Councilmember Bagby first shot, seeing how she posed for some pitches.
Those were, those were taken in the fall of 2017, right before the fires, and that was the delay. So, yeah, I guess my first comment was, thank you, Steve. I've said this before, thanks for not forgetting about us and giving up on this project, because it's been, I guess, that you and, you know, so many members of your group have really worked hard on it and just stuck to it, and here we are. So, actually, I think that, yeah, I had a hard time hearing the mayor's question, too. So, if we're going back to page 28, the project timeline, did I hear you correctly that kind of maybe the first four bullet points are Phase One? Or could you make, could you draw a line between Phase One and Phase Two on some of these bullet points? Did that make more visual sense?
I apologize for the confusion in my terminology.
No, no, no.
The, the, the entire thing you're looking at is funded. What I'm referring to is Phase One is the construction, which is the second-to-last bullet point. If there is a Phase Two of construction, that is not funded as well. So, we are going to spend out what we have and get as much of it in the ground as possible.
And then, so Phase Two would also be based on the outcome of the community engagement, which is how, how big people's, you know, requests or ideas are, or how small, and that's really going to determine the size of Phase Two. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mary Ann, please.
Okay. Steve, how are you guys, I'm sure this has been discussed a lot. How are you guys going to deal with that huge homeless encampment that seems to almost be a permanent fixture out there on Geysers Road?
We, thank you, Councilmember. We are working on contracting with Chris Brokey's group and the Riverkeeper for help with that. They are the experts at working with this population within the river, and we are working with, with them to, to do that. So, we will be hiring them to help figure out where to relocate them into a less environmentally damaging location, and then we'll be cleaning up what they leave behind.
Okay. Chris, it's good. Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz, did you have a question?
Yes, I have a concern. You mentioned that part of that riverbank has been purchased by a neighbor. How are you planning to keep the peace between the landowner and the daily users?
Wonderful question. Thank you. And it's, there are a number of private properties interspersed throughout this area. There are, depending upon the specifics of each property, there's different approaches we use. So, one of the key things is having clear boundary signage, so people actually know whose property they are on. That doesn't exist right now. Another approach is actually having rangers that patrol and/or security that helps out. So, we have enforcement. Another way is fencing. We're not huge fans of fencing all the time because of wildlife impacts, and it is necessary and can be done in an appropriate way in many cases. There's many other strategies for trying to keep the peace with the neighbors, and if we do it right, the neighbors become our eyes and ears for, for problems, helping us solve those problems before they turn into worse problems. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, what about maintenance of the bathrooms and parking areas that I assumed there would be some, correct?
Yes, correct. That will be our department's responsibility, and we are footing the bill for that. And once again, it's our opportunity to thank you for voting for Measure M, because that's what is allowing us to pay for the operations and maintenance.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
I have a quick question, if I may.
Please.
Has there been plans to address possibilities for signs such as no overnight parking or camping, having been included in the plans for the, the different entrances and such?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. I'm going to answer that two different ways. The first is the Geysers Road has, will, we will need to do a traffic study to figure out the safety of parking and where parking, how the whole flow will make sense with lines of sight, and we know what happens when there's a popular river area without good circulation. You get people turning around, looking for parking spaces on blind curves and all sorts of problems like that. So, we're going to have a traffic study that's going to help identify the correct ways, the safe ways, to have people flow through the area. Now, to the question of whether or not, what, what will the plan say regarding overnight parking? There's, that is open to the master planning process. We are well aware of the existing use pattern, which has been largely people without homes, and we're also well aware of a major camping deficit for recreational use as well as travelers along the 101 corridor. In fact, there's not a, a safe place to pull over and take a nap until you get up to 162 or something. It's, it's, it's quite a way. Sonoma County does not have its fair share of places to, to take a break. So, there's the full range of possibilities. Our, our experience is that rural property needs some form of a caretaker to be properly stewarded in many cases. So, we may actually have a ranger in an RV out there ourselves to keep an eye on things. We may have a different arrangement. We're going to explore all that. But we want to hear from the full community on all sides of the, the issue, and the key is trying to ensure that there's day use access overall.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate the answer.
Councilmembers, before I open it to the public, any, any other questions? Okay. I mean, I'm not seeing any hands. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Well, Steve, thank you for the presentation. I, I think at this point, we're just going to tell you we're, we're excited about it. I can't wait until the first community engagement that's going to be coming up here, hopefully the fall, winter of this year. I know the community's excited about it. I think along, the residents out along Geysers Road, I, I think they're going to be excited that this might be a cure-all to the homeless situation that we have out there and the dumping and all, for having land that's unattended. So, I think we all look forward to it. Nothing else, councilmembers?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Thank you. It appears that we do have one public comment, so I will let, let's see, Molly, she'd be able to speak on the topic.
Okay.
Actually, it's Chad, you see, Molly's husband.
Okay.
From the Planning Commission. I just wanted to ask if the, if the county parks has, has any opportunity for local members to be a part of an ad hoc committee or something about the trails that are being developed up there? I, I really believe that Cloverdale in particular has a great opportunity to be known for its hills, its great, you know, views and that, but hiking and trails are a great opportunity to preserve and conserve open space, and I would love to be a part of the trails part, if you're going to look for a committee of that sort.
Thank you, Steve.
Um, thank you. We, so far, we haven't identified the, the need for an ad hoc committee for the, the trails for this project, because they're very minor, little, short- the trails for this project because they're very minor little short trails going from Geysers Road, 100 feet zigzaggy down to the river. I think what you are speaking towards is more of a regional trail discussion. And that's a larger topic that I will suggest. Happy to talk to you more. There's a lot of background. And our county is getting closer to a general plan update, which is usually where those are coordinated. But more than happy to talk about that offline at another time.
Yeah, sounds great. I, I misunderstood the scope of the trails that you had mentioned in your presentation. But would love to know more about any trails within the area of Cloverdale so we can help develop it further.
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Steve, for your presentation. Irene, if there's no one else, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. Councilmembers, please, we have a long agenda, so let's keep it to five minutes. So I'll see you at 7:30. That's two minutes, I know. So we'll, we'll see you in five.
The hazard mitigation process is part of an emergency management cycle that consists of four phases. And those four phases relate generally to whether or not the activity is going on before an event, a hazardous event, during or after, or some combination of those two. Mitigation is the first phase, and it's intended to help communities prevent, either prevent future emergencies or hazards from becoming emergencies, or minimizing the potential effects of those hazards. The mitigation cycle is followed by preparedness, and I know the city through its work with Resilient Cloverdale is taking a really hard look at preparedness and has collaborated with the county in the past to line up things that it needs to line up in order to be better prepared in advance of an emergency or of a hazardous event. Response is the third cycle in the phase. This is what you do once an event has occurred. I know the city is taking a look at its emergency operations process right now. That's part of the response process. And then the final phase in the emergency management cycle is recovery. So mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. There's quite a bit of overlap among the phases. You don't make clean breaks, so some of what you're talking about with respect to Resilient Cloverdale will touch on in our document and in some of the actions that result from it. So why are we doing this? In 2000, the federal government instituted a requirement through the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, or DMA 2K, which mandated, and Mark suggested this, it mandated that all local governments and tribal organizations throughout the country prepare hazard mitigation plans in order to establish and maintain eligibility for certain funding programs. So the mitigation plan part of our project is focused on that. The process that the federal government set up through FEMA is done according to a five-year cycle. The plans are reviewed by the California Office of Emergency Services and approved by FEMA. And I think this is an important thing to consider with respect to the other part of the project that we're doing, and that is addressing mitigation planning requirements at the state level. Most planning for hazards and hazardous conditions at the state level are done through the general plan and through the safety element provisions of the general plan. In Cloverdale, what you have is a public health and safety element, so we're updating that. General plans, as you're probably familiar, aren't done according to any statutory timeframe. The obligation of local government is just to keep the general plan reflective of the community needs. There are some exceptions. For instance, the housing element needs to be updated on an eight-year cycle, five- to eight-year cycle. And with the housing, I mean, as with other general plan requirements, there's really no state or federal oversight, and minimal state oversight, actually. But over the years, to link the federal requirements and the state requirements, the people in the big building in the middle of Sacramento have sort of hung a lot of ornaments on the general plan to require that local governments make stronger connections between their general plan safety elements and hazard mitigation plans. Essentially, the state government became aware that the feds were requiring something and said, well, hey, while they're at it, why don't we add some things? So the state, over the years, has introduced additional requirements to the safety element, and they have also tied some funding strings to satisfaction of those requirements. So that's framing up the big picture why, in addition to, because it's a good idea to identify how your community is at risk and how to reduce that risk. The process that we're working our way through follows a framework that FEMA set up. It's a four-phase framework that starts with really getting your act together. The organization of the planning process, of gathering the resources, putting the documentation in place so that you can launch into the rest of the process. And that's, second step, is the assessment of the risk, really having a good understanding of the risk to which a community is exposed and what the nature of that risk is with respect to buildings, property, and people. And in particular, critical facilities are our real focus. We want to ensure that we identify the risk and that we identify the nature of that risk with respect to how a community can manage the emergency management process. The third step is the development of the mitigation strategy. We're actually in that phase right now, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the fourth phase is really part of this cycle and its adoption, and importantly, implementation of the plan. And again, for the mitigation plan component of the project, we're looking at a five-year cycle that will cover the city's eligibility to sustain eligibility for those funding programs. So the first step, as I mentioned, is really getting our act together. And what we did was worked with staff to collect as much information, as much intelligence as we could, to set the stage and provide an empirical basis for us to build the rest of the plan. As with many planning processes, this is a big part of this challenge is to really tell a story effectively. So the first part of that story is found a good, solid foundation and empirical information. The city of Cloverdale, in taking on this project, has done something that's very important, and that is it's moved away from planning through a super-regional process that A-BAG sponsored for the first two cycles of mitigation plans in the Bay Area, and it's now focusing on a local hazard mitigation plan. So this project that we're working on now is hyper-focused on the needs of Cloverdale. We're not just tearing off what's been done at a more, at a regional level. The county itself has done mitigation plans over the years and is commencing with preparation of a mitigation plan. While the city has cooperated in that planning process in the past, it has not been an official signatory to the hazard mitigation plan adopted by the county, which is why we're really focusing on this, because we want to have the city with its own plan, and we want that plan to be the basis for the city making decisions about how to use its resources and how to leverage other resources to make the community safe. So in addition to those other planning mitigation-focused or hazard-focused plans, we've jumped on a lot of other information, and we've done this in collaboration with city staff. We have done that in large part, and particularly with GIS information that I'll share with you in a few minutes, to make sure that we have a good assessment of risk. And we've worked from the historic planning processes focused on hazard mitigation to frame up those hazards that we know are a problem. And in the past, the focus has been on seismic issues or earthquake, wildfire, flooding, and landslides. So those are issues that have been recognized in the past. Over the years, additional things have come into focus, in part because state legislation has compelled them to be a focus through the general plan and through the linkages with the hazard mitigation planning process. And those are climate change, drought-related concerns. And in addition to that, we know that the city has really been focusing on some things that haven't been addressed in past processes, and this is where we get to the localization of this planning process with localized flooding and drainage problems that we know are a concern in Cloverdale. So we've included that in the mix, and I say localized flooding as distinct from the FEMA floodplain-type flooding. And in Cloverdale, that's a function of what's coming out of the hills and into the city and how you can manage that and how you can protect people and property in areas that are exposed to that localized flooding. In addition, and everybody's very aware of what's happened in 2020, one of the things that has come up is the pandemic epidemic. It's really a pandemic, it's been defined. So this has really been launched into the forefront of our thinking about what we can do through this planning process to take measures that would have overlapping benefit along with the other cycles of the emergency management process. So we've taken that on as well. So we've looked at what's in the community in terms of people, property, critical facilities, vulnerable populations, and we've worked through a vulnerability analysis to identify what's at risk and who's at risk. And I'm going to cover a little, in a little bit more detail, the hazard prioritization process and what we do with the information that comes out of that process by way of profiling hazards that will get the focus of our attention in developing the mitigation plan. I mentioned my teaming partners, Dynamic Planning and Science. They are our data experts. They have put together a very robust GIS dataset that combines all the information that I mentioned we were gathering. It's called the Risk Assessment Mapping Portal Platform. I think we have provided some information on that directly to the council, and some of you, maybe all of you, have had a chance to take a look at that. This is a tool that we're developing for this project to demonstrate that we're being very thorough, and we're demonstrating that to OES and FEMA. But it's something that will be in place and that will, the city will own moving forward. So it's a really rich resource. For purposes of this process, the real richness lies in being able to combine different types of information, and specifically with respect to some of the requirements for mitigation planning at the federal level. It's that combination of risk, of the types of risk and the vulnerability to hazards in the community. It's the interaction between that and people and property. So what we've done are exposure summaries for each type of hazard that we're profiling. And you can see here the wildfire risk exposure and landslide risk exposure. You know, Mr. Diggs did a bit of a foreshadowing of this issue when he spoke earlier, and you can see on this map, and it's really part of the focus of the plan, is how Cloverdale can deal with the wildland urban interface moving in the future. Again, we're looking at flooding from two different perspectives. One is the typical FEMA flood risk exposure, but we added to that a more, much more localized consideration, and that's some work that the city has already done to begin focusing on solutions to problems that have been created in the downtown area from the way drainage is handled currently, some of which is pretty outdated. So that will certainly be a focus of the project as we move forward. Getting back to the hazards to which the city is exposed, we've been working with staff and with the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee that we assembled for this project to query the people who really know the community best about their concerns. And what we've been through is a process of understanding the level of impact that's likely in the community, along with the probability. That begins to define risk, along with other considerations like the spatial extent that a hazard might represent to the community, what the warning time or duration of a, and duration of a hazard would be. And what that gets us to is a composite risk rating or factor. But let me, I'll quickly show you the exercise that we've gone through. We have this risk matrix that depicts both impact and probability. We have the major hazard categories. We worked the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee to apply each one of those hazards to the matrix to come up with the hazards that are of most concern. And the real focus will be on the cells in this matrix that are represented as either high or extreme, and those are combinations in terms of probability ranging from unlikely to highly likely, and in terms of impact from minor to catastrophic. We also, as a follow-up to that determination of probability and impact, have looked at that spatial extent, the warning time and the duration, to come up with a total risk factor. Now, this is something that's not final yet. We're still working to refine our understanding of some of those issues, but this is where we stand right now based on the work we've done so far. So literally, what's the problem? We've identified what the hazards of concern are, so now we're focusing on, okay, what is the impact? What literally will happen in Cloverdale based on hazardous events or hazard events of those types? And then who are the victims? Who is it that's being affected? What populations are vulnerable? What types of facilities are in high-hazard areas that we need to be aware of? And the third aspect of the problem definition is what is the threat? What is there on the horizon that will exacerbate the city's vulnerability to those hazards that we've identified and profiled? So as follow-up to that matrix exercise that I mentioned and the discussion that we had with the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, we've begun identifying problems in each one of those categories. And here you can see what we've worked through with drought, for instance. We know that there are water supply issues that are associated with drought. There are collateral relationships between drought and other hazards, flooding and wildfire. So for each hazard, this becomes, we have as part of our documentation, this table. So what do we do with that? Now that we understand the problem, we begin looking into hazard mitigation techniques, which in the plan will take the form of mitigation actions or mitigation projects. And the intent of those will be to either change the impact, change the victim, or change the threat. At the end of the day, the idea is that we will achieve greater resilience through mitigation, and this is one of the places where we're linking with the Resilient Cloverdale project to ensure that what we're doing is synced and connected with what they're doing in terms of that overall continuum of emergency management. And we have been, at this point, and I had a great working session with some of your staff leaders yesterday, to begin looking at discrete projects or actions that will have the benefit of reducing the city's exposure to those hazards. So in looking at those actions, we're driven at some level by a categorization realm that FEMA has defined that helps us think a little bit more, in a little more focused manner, about each of the actions that we've considered, that we put on the table for discussion. And those are prevention, property protection, public education and awareness, natural resource protection, because the natural environment has a really important connection with the level of exposure to particular hazards, emergency services, and finally, structural projects. And those are things that the city can do physically to reduce its exposure. My colleagues at DPS, Dynamic Planning and Science, like to call the hazard mitigation plan the CIP for hazards. So, and in that vein, one of the things that I've been doing in working with Mark and other staff is seeing how we can look at commitments that the city has either made already or is considering making by way of physical improvements that will have the benefit of mitigating the hazards to which the city is exposed. And part of that is, you know, I feel really strongly that you have to take credit for what you're doing. You don't have to invent new things from a whole cloth, but in creating a mitigation plan that will survive the scrutiny of the state and the federal government, that's a really important part of the story, is demonstrating what the city has already done and what it needs to continue to do and where that can be assisted. I struggle to whether or not to put this earlier in the presentation or not, but an important part of the commitment that the federal government would like to see, as well as the state, is demonstrated concerted effort to get to the community and to the stakeholder, to stakeholders who are knowledgeable about the community. So we set up a program that allowed us to do that. I've referred to the Mitigation Planning Committee a few times. That committee consists not only of city leadership and the departments that are involved in activities that relate to hazard mitigation or to the emergency management process overall, but we've also included representatives from the county and other public and private NDS who really are connected with mitigation planning in the area. And that includes representation from the Citrus Fair, which has come to play a really important role in how the community, how the city of Cloverdale participates in emergency management. We've obviously this year been thrown for a bit of a loop, so we've had to adjust a little bit of what we're doing. All of our meetings will be virtual of the stakeholder people, so that's been okay. It's actually worked pretty well, and better than well, I think. In some respects, we have, it's a little easier to share information through these virtual tools. The community and public outreach process, the biggest change that we're having to make is moving from what we had anticipated being public open house meetings to having virtual opportunities for the public to weigh in. One of the ways that we've done that is we've stood up a pretty robust website for our project, focused on the project from the consultant team side. We've also done a community survey, which I'll cover in a few minutes. We're still going to need to work with you to determine a way to conduct a virtual public open house, or whether or not we actually need to do that. Because of the combination of masters that we're serving here with the state requirements for general plans and the federal requirements for mitigation plans, we'll be working through the Planning Commission and back through you for hearings and informational meetings. So the public will have quite a few shots at this process, but we have to be able to describe what we've done and that we've done so conscientiously in order to get good reflections of the community's concerns. Like I mentioned, we have a website, mitigatehazards.com, that is a, my partners at DPS stand up for all of the projects that they're involved with. Cloverdale has a spot there. We have information, we share information through there. And the city has also, through its Public Works page, included information. So we're doing a good job of making information available to the public. Speaking of the public and the community survey, we decided to craft a survey that consists of essentially 10 substantive questions to get a sense from the community as to what the major concerns were, what the community's interests and needs are with respect to mitigation planning. We overlapped a little bit with preparedness to get, so that we could have information that we could share with other projects and that the city could use otherwise, so we did ask questions about preparedness as well. So we did that. We stood up both an English-language version and a Spanish-language version. We received 156 responses, which I will tell you, compared with other planning processes that I've been through, is really pretty darn good. I know there were some concerns that 156 didn't seem like it's a whole lot, or 100, actually, we were up to about 100, and working with David and his office, we made one last push, put an announcement out through the REBELI, and we got 50-some-odd more responses. In conducting the survey, one of the questions we've asked is, where do people live in the community? And this gets to really that kind of more hyper-focused level that we can afford to do, since this plan is Cloverdale's and Cloverdale's alone. We're not just part of a much larger plan. The geographic distribution of respondents has been pretty closely reflective of where people live in the community. The biggest number of responses is coming from the southwest, where the highest concentration of residential development is. So I mentioned the exercise that we went through with staff and the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee to prioritize hazards. That was another question that we had in the survey, or that was a question that we had in the survey. We asked respondents to rate their concerns for various hazards, from not concerned to extremely concerned. And the chart in the upper left shows citywide where those responses fell. By far the largest, at almost 60% of extremely concerned residents, was for wildfire. The health pandemic, again, not surprisingly, given what we're enduring right now as a society, rated very highly. Drought and climate change, which is an issue that we're, again, compelled to deal with through the state and the federal government, has also asked that local governments really focus on the climate change-related implications for other hazards. So the lower right chart here shows the number of responses that reflected either concern or that were either concerned, very concerned, or extremely concerned. Again, you can see across the board, wildfire was the biggest concern, health pandemic was also a big concern. But this is, again, part of the story that we're telling so that we can, the reviewers, the audience for this plan, so that they can understand that we've looked at community concerns as we've developed our plan. The next steps are to identify the alternatives that we're going to use to address those problems. Between when we prepared this, the presentation for this meeting and today, we've had two meetings where we've worked through that process also. So whereas when I submitted this presentation to IRE, and it was a prospective task, it's something that we've now done. So as, and in, as follow-up to that, we're defining the mitigation projects or actions that will be the essential content of the plan, and we're adding more flesh to those. We'll be reviewing them with the Mitigation Planning Committee at a meeting that we anticipate holding within the next two or three weeks. With the feedback that we get from them, we'll then launch with the preparation of the documents, well, we've already launched, that will wrap up the preparation of a draft, a local hazard mitigation project or document, and draft general plan, public health and safety element. At that point, we'll begin working through the formal hearing process that will consist of the Planning Commission, focused primarily on the safety element or the health and safety element, because that's part of their domain when we're into a general plan amendment. And then council hearings. The council will have responsibility for reviewing both the safety element and the mitigation plan, and taking action to send those plans forward to Cal, OES, and FEMA Region Nine for their review. And based on their review, we will then come back to the council for final adoption, which will be followed by FEMA approval. We're working back and forth with OES and FEMA to really get a sense of how we can move through this process, how quickly we can move through it, given all the disruptions. I have my teammates at DPS helping me out with that. But our intent is to get the city positioned in a way that will allow it to be eligible for the next round of applications for mitigation programs, grant funding programs under FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Assistance Framework. So with that, and I'm ready to answer questions if you have any. Again, we'll be back several more times to the council, but we just wanted to give you an update as to where we stand and let you ask any questions that you might have.
Well, Bob, thank you for the presentation. It's a lot of information to put your arms around. So while my fellow council members are thinking of their questions, I just have a couple of quick ones for you.
Okay.
And this is, Mark can chime in on this, too. The mitigations, do any of those tie into our capital improvement projects in any way?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. As I, as I mentioned, we like to call the mitigation plan the capital improvement program for, for hazards. And we, as I, as I mentioned in the conversation that I had with Mark and Kevin yesterday, if you have projects that are in your capital improvement programming cycle that will have benefits for mitigating against hazards, by all means, let's take that information and fold it into this plan. And again, take credit where credit's due, not try to reinvent wheels, put things in this plan and bring them to the attention of those agencies who have responsibility for overseeing the funding program to, to, to help you to the extent that you can get help in advancing those projects.
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of mitigation that has to be done in a city that has very limited resources financially. It's difficult to actually get that done. If you could go to page 41 of the, of the report, it's called, what is it? Wildfire and landslide risk exposure. And on the page 41 of the staff.
Let me get back to sharing my screen there. And my presentation doesn't have the, the numbers that you have. Is, it's one of the maps that you're looking for, Mayor?
Yep, keep going up a couple more.
Okay.
Right, right there.
Okay.
Landslide risk exposure. Could you just unravel those numbers that you have on the bottom of that map? Where you say population count 1557, then you have parcel count 104. What are you talking about there?
Yeah, well, let me, let me tell you first, the population count is based on, it's, it's derived from a G I S tabulation that takes account of the population within census blocks, I believe. And I, I don't have my, my data experts from D P S with me today, but they'd be able to answer that question. So what they've done is they've calculated the number of residents based on census information that are located within those darker red areas of that, of that map. And the, the total number of parcels within those areas is, is simply a tabulation of the parcels that are, as currently parceled that are exposed to, to those high landslide risk. And, and that's, landslide risk is a function of slope and soil type. Most of those areas, and this gets to the, to the population count and the, the parcel count are not highly populated, nor have they been highly subdivided. So the, the numbers aren't that great now in terms of population and parcel count.
So did you actually go out and test the soil composition?
No.
Determine whether it's a slide or not. Where did you get that information?
That's, that's information that's, that's been collected over the, by, by different resource agencies. And again, it's also based on, we have information that's, our G I S information includes topography and soil type, soil type information. So no, we didn't go out. We, we worked from the, the risk factors and tabulated the, the level of landslide risk based on, on that. So it's, again, it's a combination of the slopes, the, the soil types, mostly slope and soil type.
Thank you, Bob. Council members, any questions before we open it to the public? Council member Cruz, please.
Yes, Bob. I hear that you're happy with 150 replies. But I always have an issue with how do we get a greater participation of the public? I mean, we bombarded social media. We used the Rebellie. We, we talked about this through word of mouth. The chamber assisted us. And, and out of 9,000 people living in this town, we only get 150 replies. I mean, that is really sad because when we make decisions based on responses that people provide, then they say, well, I never knew about it, you know? It's, it's the catch 22. You do everything that you can. And, but can you assess what is the situation in communities? And what is it that really makes them respond? I mean, I think that these surveys would need to have more information on why it's so important and what kind of solutions the community can have if you respond to these questions. And perhaps people don't realize that it has to do with these maps that you're talking about. People don't realize that it has to do with funding for bridges and, and flood areas and issues that come with drought and susceptible communities and vulnerable members of our community. So it's kind of a compellited question, but it, it just has all my concerns and all my frustration in it.
Yeah, well, thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I, I trust that this isn't the first time you've encountered this frustration in terms of getting the community to participate in important processes. I, you know, just as an anecdote, I'll say, I said that the response was good. When you, when you frame it up in terms of 9,000 residents, not all of whom are adults and would be predisposed to responding, it does seem like it's meager. But I will tell you that it's, well, I don't have to tell you this. You and the other council members understand that it's hard to get the attention of people. And, and it's particularly difficult to get their attention in a way that allows you to provide sufficient, sufficient information and sufficiently detailed information to inform the opinions that they express once you get their attention. That's why the, the survey is only part of the outreach process. We're still trying to determine whether or not we can do a, a, an open house, a virtual open house. We've been looking at whether the community's done. I can tell you that what we've discovered, both from our other clients and from what other communities have been able to accomplish is that they don't get very many responses. They get far fewer than 156 people showing up at community meetings. So I don't know that I can explain how to solve that challenge. I will say that when I said 156 is a pretty good number. Part of, part of what I was thinking is that typically smaller communities like Cloverdale have people who are more engaged civically. And the, I think you'd be surprised at the, how few responses we've gotten to similar surveys that have been opened for much longer periods of time than ours was in communities that are many, many multiples of Cloverdale. And, and, and the information that we're gleaning from that survey will certainly not be the only information that we get. But we're using it to validate some of the directions that we're taking so that as we work our way through the process and again, assemble the story that we're telling through our documents and through the process of preparing those documents, we'll, we'll mention that what we've, we recognize that this was a concern that was expressed in the survey that we did in, in 2020. And we'll, again, that, that becomes part of the story. Now, how we can get more people to participate in the balance of the process? I, I, I wish I had an answer. I'm looking at David and Kevin. I'm sure they have answers. Because there are challenges with this, just the way we are.
I think we, we can work on some suggestions and probably try a few things.
Okay, yeah. Oh, we're open to it. We're flexible. We want, we want this to reflect the, the city's needs as much as you do and.
One of the, the tools that, that private organizations have utilized to garner greater survey results is to actually pay folks, compensate them to undertake the survey. Unfortunately, government's not in a position to use taxpayer funds for that purpose. But, but more and more, that's, that's a technique that you're seeing being utilized by private survey takers is that there's some compensation for receiving their opinion. It, it's, I think it's, 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 it's an issue that extends beyond local government to private organizations is how do you obtain that critical data and input from the community? Whether it's your, your customers or in our case, it's our residents and our, our stakeholders. And it really is challenging because everybody says, well, what's in it for me? And, 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 and I think you're absolutely right, Councilmember Cruz. How do you articulate that to, that, you know, what, what's a complex answer to, to our residents regarding, you know, hazard mitigation planning processes? So it's, it's a real challenge and it's certainly something we've, we've experienced before and I anticipate we'll, we'll continue to experience it. And it's always something we need to, you know, develop a, a better strategy around in terms of how we want to engage our community and prepare to see the turn.
You know, participation has always been a problem. If it's attendance at the city council meeting, you know, unless it's a hot issue, people just don't show up. I mean, look at the stats down below. We have 23 people now participating in this city council meeting out of, out of a population of 9,000. Even with the live stream, I bet you we're well under 100. And, and you know, participation, it's a difficult challenge. Councilmember Turner, you had a question?
Irene or Bob, could we go to the slide that had the response percentages? And I think there is some color coding to the results. And, and while you're bringing that up, I'll give my question some context. It, it seemed to me that the highest scoring items were indicative of what our society is accused of at times, which is being reactive. Drought is something that we've experienced. Wildfire is something that we've experienced. Pandemic is something that we've now experienced. And I would venture a guess that pre COVID-19 pandemic would not have scored high on something that people are concerned over. And so my question is, is taking out what you could view as outliers, is there anything insightful that you got from things we have not experienced that we should pay attention to based on this data?
I, that, that question's for me and, and maybe I'll let Mark or some other staff respond to this as well. I, and we went through a pretty long list of potential hazards that, that might be subject to query in the community. And just as a quick, quick aside, the way a lot of these hazard mitigation plans are done, they start with a laundry list that's national, that puts every conceivable type of hazard onto the list. The, the list that we queried the, the respondents about was, was already went down. We did add health pandemic, by the way, and not surprisingly, in, in, in response to what we've been going through because we wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to weigh in or to, to respond with that as a choice. So I really don't think that in terms of the types of, of hazards or hazardous events for which the city is interested in establishing and maintaining eligibility for funding support to address, that we've, that we've missed anything that we might have.
And, and forgive me if I came across incorrectly. It wasn't meant as a, as a criticism on, on the topics that were chosen. It just was more of a, of a question that, that you did answer, so thank you, of, of maybe there was something that we weren't necessarily seeing because the 81, the 85 and the 85% were, or sorry, the 83, the 85 and the 91% were just jumping at us and, you know, something like a geological hazard at 27.1%. I, I'd be curious to know if, if that would be considered something that was scoring relatively high, being that we have not experienced a major geological hazard recently.
Well, I think we might have lost Bob. Are you still there?
Hear me?
Yep, okay. Jason, did that answer all your questions? Councilmember Turner?
I think so, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmembers, any other questions? I don't see.
Councilmember Bagby, it looks like.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Please, Melanie.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to kind of follow up on Vice Mayor Turner's comments, I'm on the exact same page. And, and I was kind of surprised because I'm sure Bob is aware that, you know, we've had pretty serious flooding and, and even, you know, some mudslides affecting our local neighborhoods fairly recently. So I'm just kind of wondering, it's interesting because I guess it depends on what time of year you ask the question. If we were having atmospheric rivers and flooding, maybe that would have been, you know, pushed a little higher on the list. So I guess, you know, I guess one of my questions is how do we sort of adjust for that seasonal change, but also, you know, something that's caught my attention is that, you know, climate change got pretty high level of concern, but you don't see people making a nexus between drought, wildfire and maybe severe weather as much as you, and flooding, you know? Because if we did experience drought due to climate change, that changes, that causes more runoff and it, you know, raises our risks for, for flooding. So, you know, when we're kind of making the decisions, I, how do we, you know, how, how do we take? I, I, are we really more concentrating on this is what a cross section of folks are really concerned about and because they know the area? And then we sort of, we need to, you know, adjust our decision making based on staff information? Or how do you, how do you see, how do you see kind of those inconsistencies in the data influencing how we should consider our decision making, if that, if that makes any sense?
No, that makes a lot of sense. It's a, it's a really good question. And, and what I'm sharing with you now is the, the hazard prioritization matrix that we, we assembled with the input of the mitigation planning committee, which does consist of people, of subject matter experts and people who are in the business of paying attention to things in a different way than the public might. You know, for instance, I think, and, and the mayor asked about the landslide issue. But it's, it's not a very, it's not a big concern in terms of geographic coverage within the city. But we know it's, it's been a problem and that the city has had to deal with some landsliding, isolated as it might be. And the city has had to deal with working through decisions about where development would be in, in areas that, that are subject to landsliding. So staff in providing input, and I, and I'll say, Mark, for instance, the other day, scratched his head or it sounded like he was scratching his head and said, you know, why is an earthquake showing up as a higher priority? I mean, the, the amount of damage that could occur from an earthquake is, is, is pretty severe. And, and the question, I think, related in part to what the, the public had expressed or the community had expressed through its responses. So I think, Councilmember Bagby, the, the, the answer in part to your question is that we do have empirical information and we have expert input from people who are knowledgeable about the city in ways that the people who responded to the community survey aren't, helping to establish the priorities. And, and at the end of the day, and this is something that we were working through yesterday in the exercise that I kind of worked through with, with, with Mark and Kevin and Raphael and, and, and other staff members. And that is what should the priority be at the end of the day? And we will, we will come up with prioritization for the projects or actions that we identify at the, at the end of the day. Well, it's actually going to be part of the way through the day because it's before we adopt the plan. But we want to make sure that the city focuses its energies on asking for support to really address the problems that are, that are, that are of the biggest concern. And again, this is a five-year mitigation planning cycle. So we, we're looking at this over the next five years or 2021 through 2025. You know, what, what is it the city has the wherewithal to go after? How can we make a likelihood of success in pursuing those supportive resources? And, you know, it's not going to be a giant list of things that, that you'll have to look at five years down the road and say, well, heck, you know, we didn't, we didn't deal with half of those. And by the way, I'll say the A-BAG process that the city participated in resulted in a list of about 50 things that the city of Cloverdale was supposed to have been paying attention to over the ensuing five years. And they just didn't really, didn't really reflect, I think, the city's actual priorities. This process will, I was about to say hopefully, but I'll, I'll not say hopefully, will be much more reflective of the city's needs. It's practical, it's practical operational, with practical operational considerations taken into account so that you can move forward and address these priority hazards one at a time. I'm sorry for the long-winded answer. I told myself I wasn't going to do anything like that, but I just did.
Well, that was a long-winded answer to a long-winded question, so thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Councilmembers, any other questions? Irene, why don't we open it up to the public? Is there anyone waiting?
Your hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, then let's go ahead and move on. Bob, thank you for coming this evening.
Absolutely.
This was, this was informational and, and I know our city engineer is going to be tying these mitigations in with our capital improvement projects. So hopefully we can help with some of that funding for those projects if grants do become available.
All right. I really look forward to following up with you all.
Thank you, Bob. Moving right along, we're going to hop on the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are approved by one motion unless a council member or a member of the public wishes to have that item removed and discussed separately. And with that being said, there was a change to item number 10. And David, we received a new staff report on that. Could you just enlighten us what that change was or before we go ahead?
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to address the change. The, the change was actually requested by, by Councilmember Cruz. The, the original agenda report and resolution referred to the Parks and Recreation Department, the Water Department, and the Wastewater Department. That is a, a terminology that is derived from our budget document as this was really a budgetary request. I, I think there was concern that it, it, it appears when using that terminology that we actually have a park and rec department when in true, in, in all reality, we have a park and recreation division. And therefore, the, the, the request was to modify the language in the agenda report to reflect that. And, and that's why an updated agenda report was, was provided to council.
Thank you. Councilmembers, would anyone care to make a motion of the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'll load the item.
Okay. Seconded by Turner, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Vice Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Okay, next is Communications, a, a letter from Wayne Diggs. And I believe he spoke on the public comment already on his item, so we'll skip over that.
I do have a correspondence that I'd like to read into the.
Sure, Mary Ann, go right ahead.
Okay, this is from Joyce Mann, and it's just a little update. It's very short. Autocast update. Autocast is once again producing a narratives, a narrated self-guided audio guide of the sculptures in the 2022 Cloverdale Sculpture Trail. The audio comes from each of this year's trail sculptors. For the first time, we are adding an audio choice of English or Spanish. Yave Guzman, the director of the Cloverdale Performing Arts Center, is translating the English audio clips into Spanish on a volunteer basis. The audio clips are now being translated into Spanish. For those not familiar with Autocast, it is a free mobile app currently being used around North America and beyond to let people access over 3,500 points of interest. The 13 Cloverdale sculptures are among the points of interest. These points of interest in 100 guides include public art, historic landmarks, architecture, monuments, and other points of interest for a better understanding of communities across America and beyond are produced by Autocast. The Cloverdale sculptures are displayed on an interactive map with pictures and directions to guide you through the trail. While viewing the sculptures in person or from your smartphone, listen to the audio clips. In the past, we've had people in Canada and London, as well as people across our country, take, take part in and follow the trail. Thank you, City of Cloverdale. Your continuing support of the Cloverdale Sculpture Trail through funding of the Autocast guide is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much, Joyce Mann. So that should, the new Autocast should be in place in about two weeks. It's bilingual.
And would you please make sure that Irene gets a copy of that letter so she can have it for the records?
I will indeed.
Thank you.
Mayor, before you move on from communications, just like to make a request that with respect to item number one, the correspondence from Mr. Diggs, if we can forward that to, or refer that to the Joint City Fire District Subcommittee, I think that's a matter that the Subcommittee could, could, could follow up on Mr. Diggs' concerns and provide input regarding, you know, fire management relative to the Porterfield Creek Open Space.
Mr. Mayor, you had, you'd moved on to the next letter before I had a chance. I was hoping that, that, that his very valid concerns be addressed in some manner. And that, sending it to, to that Subcommittee would be satisfactory.
Good. Thank you. Anything else before we move on to new business?
And Mayor, I did want to acknowledge the communications that came in today for Measure O and then the Cinema County United Kindness.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I forwarded the, the letter regarding the kindness resolution and initiative, and I was hoping we could take that up at Police Finance and Administration for review.
Fine.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I received a communication from Catholic Charities and Ezekiel Guzman announcing that there will be Redwood Empire food distribution every Monday from 4:00 to 5:30 at the Citrus Fair beginning this coming Monday. And this is open to all of the community in Cloverdale.
Good. And, and would you please, Martha, make sure that Irene gets a copy of that email?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on. Public hearing, there are none. New business. Don't move it, Irene, I'm trying to read it. I receive a presentation from Open Government on Budget and Planning Builder and Permitting, Licensing, and Code Enforcement Based on Cloud Software. And David, I think this is Susie's item. With your permission, can she move forward with it?
Absolutely, Mayor. I'd like to turn this item over to our finance director, Susie Holmes, to introduce our speakers in this item tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, you'll, you'll be, you'll receive a presentation from Open Gov, from both Andrew Cricato and Mark Walsh on the Open Gov cloud-based software platform. City staff is continually working to integrate the use of technology, transparency, and time management solutions. And we believe that this software would be beneficial in all of these aspects. And after the presentation, if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer. Or if you need more clarification about how it would benefit the city, we'd be happy to answer those as well. So I'll turn it over to Andrew and Mark.
Great. I appreciate the introduction, Susie. Sorry, my camera looks a little dark here, so my, my apologies. The joys of, of working from home here, wish we could be up in person presenting to you today. But really quickly, as an introduction, my name is Andrew Cricato, Account Executive here with Open Gov, based not too far away in San Jose, California. But I work with all of our small to midsize cities and counties in Northern California, as well as the whole Pacific Northwest. And I do have my colleague, Mark Welch, on the line. Mark, do you want to give a quick introduction?
Yeah, sure. So Mark Welch, Solutions Engineer with Open Gov. Quick background of me, I spent 15 years in local government finance. I was Budget Director with the City Santa Clara, Finance Director in Capitola, California, and the most recently Administrative Services Director with Ashen, Oregon. And just, you know, five-year customer of Open Gov and just got so much value out of the tool in terms of how we were able to streamline our, our finance operations, being able to communicate to our public and, and really just, just improve our efficiency. So just excited to talk to you guys today.
Great. And yeah, really enjoyed meeting with a lot of the staff at Cloverdale, including David, Susie, Kevin Thompson, Mark Runcone, Chief Ferguson. And excited to share a little bit about the project here with Open Gov and how we can help modernize a lot of the technology for some of the critical processes in Cloverdale. And so what we'll cover here today is Open Gov's budgeting and planning suite, really to improve the budgeting process for operating capital and workforce budgeting, as well as creation of the budget book. And then we'll cover the online permitting, licensing, and code enforcement suite, including the, the online citizen portal. And then we'll touch on how this all integrates via the reporting and transparency platform for improved citizen engagement, as well as data-driven decision-making. You know, just a quick background here to Open Gov and, and who we are. So we were founded in 2012 and we're based out of Redwood City, California, with the mission to power more effective and accountable government. And so we only work with the public sector, cities, counties, some special districts, and a few state agencies as well. And really what our team noticed, our founding team very early on, was that the public sector was undergoing a digital transformation. Cities were seeing increased, increasing expectations from residents. Workforces were really trying to keep up with a lot of outdated technology. And really, a lot of our founding team noticed that technology and local government was typically five to 10 years behind what they were seeing in the private sector, or sometimes even in their own personal lives back at home. And that became kind of the, the lightbulb moment for us at Open Gov to really provide modern cloud-based technology for local government to run more efficiently and to better connect with their residents. You know, as mentioned, a lot of our team does come from careers in local government, evidenced by Mark being on the call here this evening. But even a lot of our founding staff came from all different walks of life, finance, community development, and IT. We work with about 225 agencies in California and about 1,000 nationwide. Some of the, the local governments include Clear Lake, Ukiah, Willets, Healdsburg, and Yountville, just to name a few. You know, just some of the, the high-level ROI that our customers see with this platform, you know, typically anywhere from 25 to 50% less time spent on budget development, 80% less time spent on reporting, fewer information requests, as well as about 1% to 2% of all budgets reallocated. So Mayor and Council, what I'll do here is, is we'll just review the budgeting and planning goals that we've been discussing really closely with the team. And Susie, David, please feel free to hop in, you know, and add any, any real-life examples as I'm going through this. But again, as we've been going through the review process over the last few months, you know, some of the goals that we had heard that we found that Open Gov could help with were the ability to provide real-time dashboard data to council, department heads, and residents, really enabling the city to have both financial and non-financial data at their fingertips to make data-driven decisions about improving the budget process. So, you know, one, kind of removing the manual and human error aspect out of the budget process, being able to more effectively allocate funds, and then to be able to do forecasting and scenario planning. We see this at the moment being extremely important, especially as cities are having to replan and reforecast their budgets due to COVID. The tracking and sharing capital project status, increase citizen engagement and transparency, and then improved strategic planning and citizen involvement. Susie, David, do you want to add in any context here?
Sure, I, I can add a little. Andrew, when, when we're talking about real-time data for the council, department heads, and residents, this is, this is going to be so beneficial, especially for our department heads, that they'll be able to have their financial data without having to call finance, have them run the report, make sure it's the right report that they were asking for. They'll be able to do this on their own. For residents, we get a lot of public records, act requests for financial data. And with, with this, with this software, they would be able to do that on their own. They would be able to go into our website and, and, and see. I don't know if, if Andrew's gotten to the point yet, but the data actually updates every night, so it's current. It's, it's the most accurate information that we would have. The, for the budget process, I, I just, staff spends over together cumulatively 700 hours of staff hours just to create the budget. And this budget is created in multiple Excel spreadsheets. And anybody that knows Excel knows that there's always the opportunity or the possibility of a missed formula or not including a row that should have been included, which can have some pretty serious effects on the budget. And we spend a lot of hours going through it to make sure that that doesn't happen, but it would save that much more time and staff would be able to work on other things. As far as tracking and sharing CIP projects, it would be a great way to update the citizens where we are, like safe routes to school, the one that's happening now. This is what's happening. It can be, you can, you can create your story to go along with your project status. So yeah, I think, I think I've kind of said enough now and we, I know everybody's tired, so we'll just keep moving on.
Great, and apologize for the background noise here on my end. So just to give, you know, a few examples here and some screenshots of the tool. So again, it'll be, the solution will help with end-to-end budget development for operating capital and personnel budgets, allow staff and department heads to collaborate on the budget, and then as you're going through the review process, you know, really be engaged throughout the, the entire review and proposal process. It will also help with creating the budget document that goes out to the public. It's also helpful for forecasting and scenario planning, so really, you're really easily able to, you know, run scenarios. You know, again, right now, we see a lot being done with regards to COVID. You know, if we're going to be in this for another six months versus, you know, another three months versus a year, how does that impact the budget? Then also aligning that to the strategic plan. Here's a few just examples of some scenario planning and forecasting. I'll, I'll click through this really quick, but you know, if there are any questions, feel free to let me know. Here's, you know, some examples for capital budgeting and project status updates. When we talk about reporting and performance, again, really, it's about being to, to have all relevant stakeholders have up-to-date information, whether that's financial data, whether that's non-financial. You know, working with Susie, we're talking a lot about the budgetary data. But, you know, even talking with Chief Ferguson, he had mentioned, you know, tracking things like crime data. That can all be kept in the same platform, allowing you to get, you know, overall city performance or tracking against city goals. Here's just a few examples of different types of reports that can be created for staff, management, council, or, you know, even the public. And you can see a couple dashboards, a few reports, as well as some narrative reports. Also, will be used for strategic plan tracking and communication. So if you're looking to, you know, educate residents on strategic plans or updates, you know, also do surveys. I heard that as a kind of a hot topic and, you know, driving engagement with the previous item. This also does, we do support multiple languages, so Spanish, as well as, you know, any other types of, or any other language you'd want to put out to the public. And then here's just a few more examples of the community engagement portal. As far as the results that we see from the platform, again, we see a huge time savings for staff. You know, Ukiah estimated it saved about 600 hours in creating the budget with OpenGov and saved about $87,000 in the budget process. They also increased resident involvement in it and allowed for more of staff to be involved in the budget process. We see a lot of reallocation of funds. So just being able to really get a good understanding of where funding is going. By centralizing the data, again, they moved off about 150 Excel sheets and brought everything all into one platform. See a big savings in reporting and communications, both internally and externally. And then lastly, you know, really enabling better citizen engagement and better citizen education. I'll just leave this one up. I won't go through it one by one. But any questions on this so far before we move into the permitting, licensing, and code enforcement presentation?
I do, if I can, real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
David and Susie, do you see this as being a useful tool for tracking unforeseen events and their costs? For example, I remember there being some level of kind of guesstimation that went into what our overtime costs were for PSPS and the resulting effects of the Kinkade Fire. I think the same thing happened for flooding February 2019. I believe something similar happened towards the end of 2018. Anyhow, without going into too many details, would this be able to kind of help with applying for assistance, reimbursements, painting a picture of what our costs were, things of that nature in that space?
Yes, and on top of that, it will also help with negotiations because you'll be able to, once you have all of your numbers in there and all of your personnel in there, you can put in an increase or you can say, oh, we're going to change uniform allowance. And you can see the total cost based on just changing certain numbers. But yes, for the reporting as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, I would like to know if this is a tool that could be useful to Kevin and David and Mark when writing grants, if the opportunity arises.
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Cruz, and I'll be happy to address it. And I may also ask Mr. Mark Welch to elaborate a little bit. But, you know, part of what's so key, in my opinion, with respect to writing a successful grant proposal is how you present your data and information. And this is one of the things I found in coming more familiar with OpenGov is how the data is presented to the public and how you can use those data tools to ultimately present budget scenarios within a grant application. A lot of the graphs are really user-friendly and can be copied and, you know, pasted into a grant application. And, you know, often, that's what's key to a success in, you know, getting your grant applications approved is, you know, how well you convey information. And I think, you know, it's the old adage, a picture is worth a thousand words. We could say a lot, but if we can present our information in a well-documented slide that we include in our grant application, I think it has a lot of value. So I don't know, Mark, is there anything in your experience you'd like to add?
Yeah, no, Mr. City Manager, I think you said it perfectly. And what you were saying is you're being able to tell that story. You're able to take the data, which right now probably lives in department heads, lives in Excel documents somewhere, you're able to bring that all into OpenGov. And so when you're going for a grant, you're able to analyze the data, see what is the trend, see where you need, you know, what is the priority, what is the focus area? And that's all in OpenGov. So you have one platform that has your financial information, so you're able to see how that's performing. But we also have all those metrics as well in OpenGov. So when you're going for a grant, you know, one of the hard part is compiling all that data. And what's nice is in OpenGov, it's all there. So really streamline that process also.
I have, Mark, excuse me, Mary Ann, I wanted to hear from Kevin and Mark, too.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said in the few grants that I've done. It certainly would be very helpful. My focus in this project really has been on the building and planning permitting module, which we're going to get into in a minute, which I'm really excited about and I'm happy to talk about when we get to that point.
Okay, so I'll wait, but, you know, given our skeleton staff, I think this would be a great tool.
Mark, did you want to respond to Councilmember Cruz's comments on grant writing?
Well, for us, it's not so much the grant writing. It's more a presentation of our projects and the status of them, and also for permitting as well. So, but I'll let the presentation continue and I can address it at the end.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham, you had a question, please?
Yeah, I did. Over the past few months, I've gotten a lot of inquiries about whether the city's ever going to have a, A, a better website, but everybody complains about the websites, no matter what. But also, I'm wondering if this particular platform, which it appears to do, would give the public a way to keep track of projects? And a lot of people have requested, why don't we have a public information officer? Well, we're not going to ever probably have that in a small community like us. So will this be incredibly user-friendly to the public so they can keep up on what kind of projects are going on? So it will be easily accessible to the public?
It is. To address, it's really accessible to the public. And the nice thing is from a staff perspective, it's really easy to update these. You know, I worked in government, we worked on Civic Plus, one of the bigger websites. It's cumbersome, you know, we only had certain people in the city that could even get in and access that. But with our Stories platform, it's really quick to update and get either embedded in your website, link in your website to get the information out. We've actually seen it used a lot, like Andrew's shown on this capital improvement plan for Ukiah. But it's also used during emergencies. So City of Reading during the car fire, they got OpenGov up and running in a day to communicate out to their residents just because they saw it as such an easy platform to update information. And so with the ease of use from a staff perspective, it's conducive to even provide more information to the community to come in and, you know, see the status.
It appears to me to be that way, too. And I guess it kind of takes people's breath away when you look at the bottom-line costs on something like this. But if I think the public realizes that it's not only going to make it easier for, you know, so many things, grant writing, but to keep them informed and the ease of use, I think it becomes then worth the money.
Thank you, Councilmember Brigham. Can we move on with the report, please, Andrew, Mark?
Yeah, we'll do. So we'll move next into the permitting, licensing, and code enforcement part of the project. And again, working with the team, working really closely with Kevin. I think his big sentiment here, and I think these were his words, not mine, was really to bring technology in this area to the 21st century and to allow, you know, more 24/7 self-service capability for residents to apply for applications and track the status of their applications all online without having to come into City Hall. Again, we see this being probably the most asked about part of our solution during COVID, you know, especially as a lot of cities aren't open 24/7. But you still want to continue processing permits and licenses, you want to keep collecting revenue. And so, you know, working with the team, you know, learned most of these processes are still done manually via like triplicate forms, residents coming in. Payments all have to be done in person as well. And then, you know, the internal tracking of the application is difficult when it's going from department to department, staff member to staff member. Kevin, Susie, I'll let you add any detail there.
Well, I mean, as you mentioned, during COVID, you know, we're particularly down. But, you know, we don't have, we have a contract building department, so we have limited hours. This is going to be a really, just a great tool. It's going to help Mark Harris, our building inspector, as well as customers and citizens of town. We are, I don't think, might want to talk too much about this, but we are looking at the next step of potentially having our files scanned and entered into it. We've kind of done a little preliminary work on that, which would be a great tool. Save a lot of time for Rafael and I. People frequently ask for building permit files, address files, what's in there? Do they do this with a permit, things like that? It would all be able to be handled online, along with the permitting. So it's, yeah, I mean, the permitting aspect of it, I'm really excited about. And I've mentioned before, one of the goals that I have is to update our building permit fee, which is way out of date. And when we do that, we'll be able to add a technology fee to help keep the system up and running going forward.
Yeah, and I just want to add really quickly that currently our building inspector is doing all of his business on City Hall steps. He's having to make appointments to meet people within, you know, a one- or two-hour window. And, but even when, before COVID, he had specific hours that he was in the office to accept applications. This would allow the clients to apply at their leisure, at home or in the evening or in the morning. They wouldn't have to wait for the building inspector to be available.
Just really, really quick, there'll be many permits that he won't really have to even look at too much. Things like furnaces and water heaters will just go right through and be able to be issued by our staff. So again, I'm excited about it. Just also, again, really quick, you know, when we get a planning project for routing, this will make that a lot easier, too. Outside agencies like the Fire District will have access to it. So, you know, Rafael can get the information in there, hit the send button. They can put their comments right in the website and it's all culminated, you know, brought together easily without paper and just more efficient.
Thank you, Kevin. Folks, if we can move on with the report and then we'll come back for questions.
Yeah, sure thing. And just to give you a couple illustrations here, I'll move quickly. But, you know, what we'll provide is really an online portal for residents to, you know, search any application, applications they're looking for, do their application all online, they'll have a step-by-step process of what they'll need to submit. And then internally, as the applications come in, they'll be able to track where it's at in the process, you know, who's up next in the review process, as well as communicate that out with residents. So, you know, get less calls about asking, hey, what's the status of my permit and my application? And then lastly, you know, all the payments will be able to be processed online as well. So you can do that, you know, again, everything all from home if you're a resident. And the city will be able to process it in a few different ways as well, whether it's cash, credit card, or if they want to connect like an ACH payment. And then lastly, you know, similar to the reporting that we showed you, you'll be able to get reports for all the permitting and licensing data. I'll go over this quickly, but, you know, again, we see a huge, huge staff time savings with a platform like this, you know, generally anywhere from 50% to 75% reduction in permit processing time, as well as, you know, just really adding a lot of convenience for residents to be able to do things all online. And then this is just another one that digitized all their paper permitting processes within a few months. So that's kind of the overview of the permitting, licensing, and code enforcement part of the platform. I'll open it up for any questions.
Let's continue with the rest of the presentation, then we'll come back with questions, please.
Perfect. Yeah, the last thing I'll touch on here is just the support with OpenGov. We really take support seriously with OpenGov. We know, you know, other governments have been sometimes burned by technology companies. But we really do aim to have long-term partnerships with all customers. And so, you know, with being an OpenGov customer, it's not something where we give you the software and say, good luck, you know, it's something we'll guide you through the deployment process. You'll have the 24/7 support line, online resources, access to the OpenGov network. You know, also access to a lot of our former government staff, including Mark. And then you'll have a customer success representative who you would know by name. So if you have, you know, different initiatives or different projects you're looking to do, you know, someone to really guide you through the process. And then, you know, last thing I'll touch on this is all support is included with a subscription, so we don't do additional charges for support. Or, you know, if you have to call in or get help, that's all included with the subscription.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Mark. Let's open it up for questions, council members. Any questions that you have? I think Councilmember Bagby and I have seen this presentation before. So it's, you know, I think I have most of my questions answered, but I do have one or two. So council members, do you have any at this point? Well, let me go, I don't see any hands, so let me go on with mine if I could. What happens after the five years? If we decide that, you know, the program just isn't quite right for us, what's the exit strategy on retrieving our information from the cloud?
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, first off, we would hate to see you go in that situation. But for retrieving the data, you own all the data, we don't hold it hostage. So any data that's in the platform can be exported via CSV or Excel. And, you know, that's at no additional charge. So, you know, if you did want to leave, you would be able to take all the data with you.
Okay. And then this is a Jose question. I'm glad that the resolution calls for the form approved by our city attorney. Because, you know, the company has really good references from other cities. But if something goes sideways and for some reason they lose our information, you know, what's the, how do we recoup that information? Do we get a backup tape? Can we download a backup every quarter, every month? What happens if something happens to your system with a hacker or something?
Right. Mark, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, sure. So we use Amazon Web Services. So AWS is our provider of cloud technology. So that's where we house OpenGov, that's where your data is housed. So that's world-class cloud software. So we use all their security, best-in-practice security there. And they're constantly doing backups. So our main server is in Oregon. They have backups on the East Coast and other places. So your data is on AWS. So the chances of it getting hacked and being ruined are very low. We know, you know, it can happen. And that's why AWS has a bunch of backup servers capturing that data as well.
And then my last, if this should be approved for staff, David, I'd like to see City Council, the Finance, Police, Admin Subcommittee get an update of the status of where we are, how we're progressing with the information getting into the new system. So I'd like to see something on a quarterly basis, if the rest of the council agrees with that. So council members, one more time, any questions on this before I open it to the public? Councilmember Cruz, please?
Do we have to wait five years if we feel that it's not working for us?
Yeah, good question. No, so we actually include every year. If you would, if you wanted to get out of the contract, you could get out after every year.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, the tool seems very useful, very appealing and attractive. However, you know, we all have our budget restrictions and situations and unexpected events. So I just want to make sure that we are able to... So I just want to make sure that we are able to be financially responsible to all.
Yeah, forgive me if I missed the detail on this in the report, but where would we be funding this from if we approved it?
It would be coming out of, I think Susie broke it down for us, on budget, financial impacts.
Yeah, there's $14,000 that is currently budgeted. The remainder would come out of the general fund. We do have CARES Act funding that this is eligible for, so we could offset it against any, any, any revenue that came in that wasn't already expensed.
Thank you.
And then it would also, a portion would come from the, from the water, the sewer, and the airport funds.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Gus. At the end of the year, when we do our overhead calculation, that then, what, since it would essentially be coming out of the finance department, then water, wastewater, and airport would all get a piece of that.
Any other questions, council members?
No.
I mean, Marianne, I'm sorry, please.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Irene, can we open it up to the public?
Yes, Mayor, no hands are raised at this time.
Council members, there's a resolution on, on page 110 of your packet. If somebody would like to offer that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've been pushing for this since I saw it at probably my first League of Cities conference, so I would like to offer the resolution.
Please.
City of, sorry, we're in Cloverdale, thank you. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year software service agreement with the open, with OpenGov and a form approved by city attorney for budgeting and planning and permitting, licensing, and code enforcement cloud-based software services in an amount not to exceed $108,770 in year one, and $52,420 in years two through five, and amend the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can we have a roll call, Irene, please?
Yes. Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. David, any problems giving us a quarterly report to the Finance, Police, Admin Subcommittee?
Mayor, I do anticipate any problems with providing quarterly or even, you know, monthly updates on the status of implementation. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to move quickly to implement this new platform. We may not transition our existing budget into this program. We'll see how it goes, but we'll certainly, for the next fiscal year, we'll be working on, you know, getting the budget documents prepared in OpenGov.
Good, thank you. Because, you know, I, I feel, I feel guilty or bad even saying this, but, you know, the program's only going to be as good as we work it. You know, if we get trash in, we're going to get trash out. So that's why I'd like to see a quarterly report of where we're standing with this, so.
Great idea.
It's going to be better than piles and piles of Excel spreadsheets, which I had my camera off and I was muted, so you, you didn't hear my scream. But this is going to be a great improvement, I think that. And it's also going to improve our transparency with the public, which I think will add to our engagement, which was a subject of an earlier item. So I'm looking forward to getting started on this.
Well, I'm excited.
Far from puppies, not far from puppies.
I'm excited about it being linked into our website.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, Mark, Andrew, thank you very much for your presentation. David, I'm sorry, I cut you off there.
I was just saying thank you to Mark and Andrew for their, their work to get us to this point.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, all.
Okay, next item, item number 13. Adjustment, adjusting maximum allowable solid waste composting recycling rates under the Solid Waste Collection Franchise Agreement between the city and Recology Sonoma Marin, Inc. And this item is David's?
Mayor, members of council, my pleasure to speak to this item. So just a little bit of background. In, in 2011, the city entered into a franchise agreement with, at that time, was with Redwood Empire Disposal. We often refer to that previous hauler as the Rado Group. In 2017, the council approved transferring that franchise agreement or otherwise assigning it to Recology Sonoma Marin. So since that time, Recology Sonoma Marin has been our, our franchise solid waste recycling and green waste hauler for the city of Cloverdale. Under the franchise agreement, the hauler is allowed to provide or request an annual rate adjustment, particularly for pass, for pass-through of rates that they incur or charges that they incur. This is largely based on four components that are, that make up what's referred to as the refuse rate index. And that includes four components, and that, that's the collection component. So that means actually, you know, the, the cost of, of actually picking up the waste from, from curbside. There's a disposal component, and, and that's a fee that the landfill actually charges Recology for disposing the material that they collect from our, from our customers and residents. There's also a compost processing fee, and that's the fee associated with processing all of our green waste materials. And in addition to that, there is a franchise fee. That franchise fee is payable from the hauler to the city. That rate is currently 11%. One additional component is a retroactive fee. And the retroactive fee is really intended to cover the timing difference between when the county implements their increase in the annual tipping fee, which occurs on April 1st of every year. But under our franchise agreement, the hauler cannot adjust rates until September. So there's a period of time where the hauler incurs additional expenses with, with respect to disposing the, the waste. And this retroactive fee, which ends up being relatively minor in the scheme of fees, you know, basically allows them to kind of collect back that, that period of time. In addition, this year, Recology submitted what's really considered an extraordinary request for a consideration of fees for purchase of three new vehicles or three new trucks. That is not something that's covered in the franchise agreement under the refuse rate index. It's really an extraordinary rate request. As part of the submittal by Recology, we, on an annual basis, ask an independent consultant to undertake a review of the rate request and verify what's, you know, otherwise a, a pretty large set of numbers for all of the various categories that the fees are set. And that, that firm is R3. R3 did conduct a rate review, a review of the, the rate requests submitted by Recology. And joining us tonight is Carrie Baxter from R3. She's going to speak to the review of the rates, give you an overview of the percentage increase, you know, based just on the, what I'll refer to as the RRI, or refuse rate increase, but also speak to Recology's request for, for a rate, rate adjustment to cover the cost of the, the vehicles and provide a recommendation. What's included in your packet are two resolutions, I mean, one resolution, but two rate schedules. The first rate schedule is based on just allowing the, the refuse rate index for those components that I discussed earlier. The second rate sheet is if council so decides to include the additional cost of the new vehicles in this rate adjustment. And as you can see, the, those, the, there's quite a large difference in the rates. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce Carrie Baxter from R3. R3 has been a longtime rate consultant for the city of Cloverdale, and also works very closely with Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, now known as Zero Waste Sonoma. So I'd like to turn it over to Carrie, and Carrie's going to give us an overview of Recology's rate review request.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor Walter and council members. I'm Carrie Baxter from R3 Consulting Group. We did review the supporting documentation that was submitted by Recology and found that they did correctly calculate the RRI adjustment for the 2020, 2021 customer rates. With the calculated RRI adjustment, as David mentioned, they also submitted a request for the replacement of three collection vehicles. First, before I go into that, the, the rate adjustment that they're requesting with just the RRI is a 1.6% increase, which actually equates to about 36 cents for your, the majority of your customers in the city, the residents. The majority of them currently are subscribed to a 32-gallon container. So if, if, sorry. Recology also requested that the three collection containers also be added into this annual rate increase. But the RRI methodology that's in the collection contract doesn't allow for an additional adjustment such as that. Instead, they have, the, the agreement has a number of options of what would be considered a special rate review, where Recology would bring forward additional information that we would be able to review for their, their rate revenues, disposal costs, and the, the costs related to the new trucks, just to ensure that they're accurate and necessary. If the city council was to decide to approve the additional three trucks to be added with this rate increase, the math makes sense, and we, we did review that portion of it, but we were not able to review the details. If that was approved, the increase would be a 17.76% increase, or $5.23 a month for your residential customers, or 9.19%, or $29.18 on average for your commercial customers. Now, the vehicles that are being asked to be replaced do range between 13 and 21 years old right now, and the contract has about five years left before it expires. So they are definitely aging and do need replacement. But as I mentioned earlier, the agreement does allow Recology to request a special rate review for changes in law, such as the carb requirements that do require these vehicles to be replaced currently. And so the report that we submitted to the city recommends that the city approved the RRI adjustment tonight. And the, the first rate sheet shows the new rates with just the RRI adjustment applied, the second one with the RRI adjustment and the replacement of vehicles. R3 also recommends that the city proceed with discussions with Recology to look at more details on the cost for those collection vehicles, as well as new regulations that are coming into play. SB 1383 is going to require a lot more hands-on, making sure that your commercial customers, as well as residential customers, all are subscribed to Organics Collection in the coming years. And again, with the, the contract coming to an end in less than five years, it's another, another reason to sit down and have discussions sooner.
Thank you, Carrie. You know, I was looking at the, the rate sheet on page 200 of our city council report. And, and just so I understand this, she said that the Cloverdale has an average of 32-gallon containers is what we distribute mostly?
Correct.
So if I follow that line over 32 gallons, with the vehicles, it's going to increase $4.17?
That's correct, Mayor.
But if, if, if I try and add the two together, it doesn't come up to $27.90? Or am I doing that wrong? Oh, I see, okay, all right. My, my bad. I should add that $4.17 to the effective rates as of 9/119, not the new proposed rates. Okay. Council members, any questions? Sorry about that. Melanie?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, right on that same line, I was going to ask Carrie, if with her experience, do you think that, because, I mean, you know, to, to us, that doesn't seem like a lot of money, but to people who are, you know, pinching their, concerned about their budgets, this is money. Do you, do you think it will influence more people to go from 32 to 20? And maybe that's not a bad thing.
It may not be a bad thing for them to go to a 20-gallon container, but I'm sure that the opposite side of the table would say that they're going to end up with more contamination in their recycling container with that.
Okay, so that's kind of the balance that we're trying to hit, is make sure that we don't have recycling contamin, or composting contamination as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
What would happen if there are no new trucks?
You're going to have a lot more vehicles breaking down. Your service may end up not being as consistent as it should be.
But does that have an impact on contamination?
On the new trucks, no.
And councilmember?
If we don't, if we don't replace them?
Well, councilmember Cruz, one of the things that councilmember Bagby and I discussed at the Finance Admin Meeting was to, we, we looked at the age of those trucks, and, and they were pretty old, and the wear and tear that is on them. Our big concern was, are they strictly going to be used in Cloverdale? You know, I'd hate to see Cloverdale paying for trucks that are going to be used in Windsor or in Hillsburg. And I, I think we did receive some assurance that they would be used here in Cloverdale. So we, we kind of feel like there are trash trucks. But the justification, based on the years and the wear and tear on those vehicles, you know, we felt it was justified. And I'm not so sure if it was in this report, the way it was broken down to us. Melanie, do you remember offhand?
Yeah, I, I didn't see the same chart, but maybe city manager can confirm that. I, yeah, I don't think we're seeing the same level of detail that we saw at the subcommittee level.
The, the report submitted by Recology is, is included in, in the agenda packet. I, I think what you're speaking to, Mayor, and, and councilmember, are the, you know, confirming that the new proposed vehicles would be dedicated to the city of Cloverdale. And, and I guess, you know, first I want to kind of get to councilmember Cruz's question. You know, we did notice when we were looking at the trucks that they're currently utilizing, that they, they weren't the trucks that were originally included in the franchise agreement. And, and that's for, for good reason. The trucks when they were.
I'm sorry, David, excuse me, I cannot hear you well.
Yeah, you're muffled, David.
Okay, it might be a matter of my connection. I can stop my video for a second to see if that, see if, does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe, maybe a broadband bandwidth issue. Prior to Recology being assigned the franchise agreement, the city was the recipient of a, a very large number of complaints from, or about the, the former hauler because of the function, nature of the, the equipment, including, you know, leaks of solid waste materials, including leaks of hydraulic fluid, and, you know, generally poor, poor performance. You know, since. Um, you know, since since Recology has taken over, you know, they've they've tried to maximize the use of of, you know, uh better vehicles. I think they've probably enhanced their maintenance schedule, uh, and the number of complaints has gone down substantially. Uh, I did confirm with Recology that the new proposed vehicles uh would be utilized uh by uh or for Cloverdale routes, though they they did say that uh you know, from time to time that they may be utilized for for uh other routes as needed. So it wasn't an absolute uh confirmation that it would only be used uh by Cloverdale customers. Uh, so I think that that would be kind of our remaining concern uh that 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 uh, you know, the council may have. But tha- that's something if if, you know, council uh you know, wants to move forward with their with the refuse rate index only, we can certainly work more closely with Recology to identify uh how those vehicles are planned to be used, uh, confirm, you know, their use and dedication to our residents only. Um, but also look more closely at the amortization schedule uh so that, you know, maybe uh you you may want to consider uh looking at the term of the existing franchise agreement. I mean, it's kind of outside the scope of our our discussion today. Uh, but that would be another reason to maybe uh further the discussion about purchasing the new vehicles.
Thank you, Dave.
We have, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on that. Uh, and we have five more years in the contract and how long are the trucks supposed to last?
The the trucks typically have a useful life of at least 10 years. Um, often they can be, if they're well maintained, can certainly have a life longer than that. Um, so the useful life of these three new vehicles certainly is beyond the uh term of the current franchise agreement, which is, we have five more years remaining on that, on the agreement.
So in a way, we would be forced uh to continue with this company because we have purchased these trucks.
Well, that's certainly a discretion for for council to determine whether you'd want to extend the franchise agreement beyond the five years. Uh, it's so i- it's really a policy call by council uh if if uh you you wanted to extend the term. But otherwise, there could be an argument made that some of these upfront costs for these vehicles are putting a burden on ratepayers uh, you know, during the five-year term rather than a longer period of time.
And and if I could just add here, you know, the three vehicles that they're looking to replace, one is uh the first one is a 1999 Volvo side loader. That's 21 years old. A 2002 Volvo side loader, that's 18 years old. And a 2007 front loader, which is 13 years old. It's not, I don't feel it's my job to say you don't need new trucks. I mean, it it requests that they're making, it's it it's up to us to decide if we want to help fund their purchase to keep the service up to up to speed and have it continue the way it's been, which has really been pretty good. That's going to leave three other trucks in their inventory. That's, one is a 2012, one is a 2015, and one is a 2018. So w- with that being said, you know, are we, you, like you said, uh, council member Cruz, you know, uh, are we committed to renew the contract after because of this purchase? They they could come back in three years and say, you know what? We've got to purchase another truck. Can you help us out? So I guess the decision is, you know, for me, not to decide whether they need trucks or not. That's their call. It's do I want my ratepayers to pay for those and 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 what do they get out of it? So.
If I may also, it's not that they're requesting to have you purchase the trucks. They're actually asking for the trucks to be leased. So it would only be an annual lease that you're paying within the rate base.
Council members, anything? Um, Jason, please?
Yeah, would it be um a reasonable assumption that the newer vehicles would be quieter, uh potentially do less emissions where we might be able to check other boxes like community satisfaction or our greenhouse gas emissions that we've made? You know, kind of part of our our foundational values as a council. Would it be reasonable to assume these newer trucks would be more efficient and quieter?
I I definitely think that's a reasonable assumption, Vice Mayor. Um, you know, most newer vehicles have uh, you know, newer uh technology, uh, you know, lower, you know, the new, the, they have they meet newer, more stricter emission standards than when the older vehicles were purchased. Uh, and so I certainly do think that we could reasonably anticipate, you know, quieter vehicle and also less less polluting vehicles. Uh, but we don't have any concrete data uh that was submitted with this rate request to to verify that, you know, other than the these would be would be new vehicles.
And they would also meet the carb requirements, which any vehicle that's 2009 or older vehicle needs to be replaced by 2023.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from council members, so why don't we open it up?
I have a question, Gus.
Yes, Marion, I'm sorry. Please.
No, that's okay. Um, actually, what I'm thinking a little bit about the fact that um if indeed we're buying the new trucks and our ratepayers are seeing um an upswing in their bill, um, I think it's kind of fair if those trucks are not going to be only used in Cloverdale, then why wouldn't say if they're going to be used in Hillsburg, why wouldn't Hillsburg be sharing some of this expense? And and are they? Maybe I'm confused there. Um, so I I just got a couple texts about this very issue. How can we be assured that we're not, again, paying for stuff that we aren't really using that's being used in the county itself um and in other cities? So that's a, that's a legitimate question.
Yep. Carrie, do you know that?
Uh, I believe they'll be uh prorated based on the share usage. Again, that would be more of a a detailed review that we would look into.
I mean, there is a um, a member of the audience that has his hand up. Frederick Stenler, I believe.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Fred Stenler. I'm the general manager at Recology Sonoma Marin. Yeah, absolutely. To just echo what Carrie was saying, uh, payment is absolutely a lease. You're not buying any trucks. So if the contract ends for any reason, if next year we for any reason are are non-performance and and the the contract is ejected, y- y- you immediately stop paying for it. So there is no prepayment and it's absolutely based on use. We've been doing the work for three years, so we know exactly what's out there. So it's 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 beyond an educated guess. It's based on the actual services that are there and the costs are prorated as such. So um, that's how we proposed this. We essentially effectively submitted thinking that this was um, you know, a a special rate review uh supplement with this. And so we put all of the truck details as well as the cost, the lease expense, um, everything that's embedded with it in the submission here, so. And and the age that you're speaking about on these vehicles, I mean, it's it's unheard of for trucks to last as long as they are. And that we found that that's, really, these were the corners that were cut under the prior operator. Um, in in order to keep the prices so low, sacrifices had to be made as far as environmental compliance, um, you know, legal weight compliance, labor, labor compliance laws, and we've essentially eaten the cost for the last three years, so um, you know, I'm I hate to come and ask for more than than usual here. I I do recognize that the times are tough. We we unfortunately did the same thing in Sebastopol where we supplemented an RRI with a with a carb truck replacement, and it was a very similar impact. You know, you're i- i- it the percentage looks higher than the dollar amount, of course. You know, in this case, you're, as Carrie said, the most common customer would be looking at going from $23 to 28. Um, a- and so, but 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 that that investment really uh is in the consistency of service here because right now we're seeing catastrophic failure on assets of that age uh with like rear ends failing, uh transmissions failing. We 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 opened up some of what would essentially be like where we would expect to see a catalytic converter during the conversion. And again, to some of like the the cost-cutting measures that were there, we found them completely removed from the stacks and the trucks, which essentially means it's it's emitting it's emitting pollutants into the air like a like a diesel uh train. So we've front-loaded all of this and and corrected those measures and essentially borne the burden of the costs there. So um, you know, a special rate review in the future will address this, but it's essentially just more hemorrhaging between now and then, and and it's going to result in a larger increase. Um, the the last comment I wanted to also add is, and I know you have a massive packet here, but it it 235, I believe, inside your packet is what we have found is a very useful tool uh to ensure that it's an equitable cost uh relative to services in the area. And and so even at the hypothetical increase of the RRI plus trucks, you know, Cloverdale is still looking to be on average 44% lower by cost comparison with a local RFP that took place. It's um, specifically Santa Rosa, and you could also compare it against uh Windsor's RFP. It's a effective 70% lower in cost, so customers of Cloverdale are still getting a screaming deal for the cost of services here uh when you're looking at a market rate basis here, um, taking the RRI and the truck replacement. My my interests here are are genuinely just consistency in the quality service that we endeavored to essentially repair and provide now.
Do you mind talking a little bit about the trucks you've been replacing them with?
Yeah, yeah, so uh primarily new way vehicles. So like you were talking about, uh, there's there's benefits in air emissions and noise. Um, of course, the aesthetic as well. We hear that from our customers. But but really, it's noise is is the primary benefit that I hear from the customers. Uh, people who are in tune with the impacts of of, you know, air air impacts. Uh, you know, the the fuel consumption is down. We we consume biodiesel. It's it's kind of the preferred alternative to um traditional fossil fuels. But even in these new vehicles, um, you know, consumption and efficiency and the the cleaning units, there's DPF filters uh where where every night you're burning particulates out of the stack uh in order to run cleaner during the day. So i- i- every every technology, you know, on the truck essentially has quantum leaps over here. So the jump from what's in that 1999 model to what would come off the the shelf in 2021, I mean, it it would be the same thing as if you went to a dealership 21 years ago and bought a car. I mean, you couldn't buy a hybrid. You couldn't buy an electric vehicle then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Bagby, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I guess, you know, if this seems like deja vu all over again, I mean, you know, there's there's a reason for that. Um, this is a result of deferred maintenance from the 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 previous contract. And um, when I was serving on uh what what came to be known as Zero Waste Sonoma, we we knew that this was coming and previous councils have known that this is coming because they knew how much um, the the previous hauler uh just deferred maintenance and kicked the can down the road. And so what we're dealing with now is, you know, coming to terms with um all of this deferred maintenance, and we have to make a decision here. I mean, these trucks just shouldn't be on the road. And we really, really shouldn't even, this shouldn't even, wouldn't even be a conversation if it weren't for the fact that, you know, we've had similar conversations in other areas, but we're kind of being forced to 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 pay the piper. So, I mean, I I don't see any reason to discuss it much further. I mean, I I think we've had our questions answered. The fact is, is that um our rates have been held artificially low. And we are still going to be lower than um, than, you know, than other rates in other cities around us. So I think that we just have to, you know, get real about what needs to get done and we need to to move forward. I mean, i- i- yeah, the only, the only caveat that I would give, and I think I, you know, I mentioned this in the subcommittee, is that, yeah, we have we're looking at um leasing, you know, new vehicles that are absolutely necessary, and we have five years more on our contract. The only thing I would ask is, is it, is it time to um revisit the contract um or renegotiate now? Um, if if that is impossible, then I I think we need to move forward with supporting the um the vehicle acquisition because there's just, there's just, there's nowhere else to squeeze. There's nowhere else to cut. Something that we just, we have to move forward with in order to um ma- maintain um a level of service that people are 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 paying for and entitled to. So I would just like us to see us move forward on this item.
Well, there's a resolution on page 202 if you'd like to operate or give direction to to staff.
Comment, Mr. Mayor, before we move on this?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I'm just, you know, I understand all these situations and my concern at this point is that our our um constituents are being bombarded with all sorts of um races um in the near future. And uh, is it possible to delay this any? Because um, you know, we are in a pandemic situation. We are in fire season. We are experiencing unemployment. We are experiencing food insecurity. And yes, this has to happen, and we want to have more environmental-friendly and environmental-efficient um equipment, but I'm also concerned about the other aspect. And there are some business decisions that um have to be um faced by by the company. And I understand that we want to have trash picked up. We 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 need to have water and we need to have uh sewer services. Those are basic needs in our everyday life. But is it all at once or is it possible to defer this somewhat later when our life is a little bit more under control?
Th- this is how the can gets kicked down the road. It's a tough decision that we have to make. And and it is on the backs of increased water and sewer rates. I I I totally get that. You know, I'm willing to support this project coming forward the way it is.
If there's no other way, I would too, because we need to have cleaner equipment and we need to have trash picked up. Uh, I I just do it with a har- heavy heart, let's say.
We all do. I think we all do. Yes. Council members, what do you think?
Mayor, if I if I can, just to to weigh in here, um, really, there's, I, as I see it, there's, there's two options for council. Um, the, I think the resolution as set forth in your agenda packet is is fine. It's really a determination whether you you uh support uh adjusting the rates uh for just the rate, the refuse rate index only. And certainly I would recommend that because that is an a- an additional cost that Recology is incurring to provide service uh in in Cloverdale. Um, or to also include the purchase of the new vehicles, which is the attachment B or a separate rate schedule. Um, I I think R three in their review, uh, you know, didn't do the uh super deep dive on the analysis. Uh, Mr. Stenler did indicate that, you know, the the, you know, the cost of vehicles and leasing rates is, you know, which is provided for in the packet. Uh, I think is is uh generally accurate and provides, you know, for the proportional share of costs for for Cloverdale. Uh, so if you wanted to uh support that request now, uh, you could, you could do so by adopting the resolution with the rates identified with the truck replacement.
Thank you, David. Council members, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
So, Ms. City Manager, if I moved um the item and as amended, would that work for you and the city attorney to include the um the vehicle leasing?
And yes, that would be, that would be proper. That makes clear the rates that are that are being approved.
Okay. All right. Well, so I'll move.
Okay, is there a second? I will second uh because I want these trucks off off the road. The pollutants, one is, wha- what did I say? 20 some odd years old, you know, they they need to be replaced. So could we have a roll call? Motion by Bagby, seconded by Walter Irene?
Shall I read, shall I read the resolution?
Please.
Please.
Okay. Um, City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution, um, the City of Cloverdale approving maximum allowable solid waste composting and recycling rates and repealing rate schedules adopted under resolution number 0902020, as amended with the, um, additional rates. Is that adequate?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Second. Irene, roll call.
Vice Mayor Turner?
No.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Well, um, thank you for the presentation. I don't know where Carrie went, but, oh.
He's still there.
Thank you, Carrie, for the presentation and, and Frederick, thank you as well. Next item, item 14, Mary Ann, I think you're going to be, cue yourself from this one. This is on, um, the extension or termination of urgency ordinance that provides temporary housing standard. So Irene, let the records reflect, please, that councilmember Brigham has recused herself from this item. And, um, Kevin, I think this is your item with David.
Yes, it is. Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, this is a discussion of our temporary urgent, uh, urgency ordinance for emergency housing. In 2017, after the Tubbs fire, the City of Cloverdale, along with a number of other cities, after a state of emergency was declared, adopted an urgency ordinance, uh, to support temporary housing. And the basic idea really was to allow people whose homes were destroyed, the, uh, whose homes were destroyed, the opportunity to live in trailers, fifth wheels, RVs and the like on private property, provided certain standards were met. Uh, the urgency ordinance also included, um, temporarily allowing multifamily residential and service commercial. The ordinance was first adopted in, uh, December 12th, 2017 and extended last year. And it is, it's, uh, is set to expire this year, October 23rd. Uh, along with the ordinance, we did set up a temporary land use certificate, which is a real basic permit that we would issue alongside people trying to, uh, take advantage of this. It did require a building permit or actually, um, it required a building inspection. And that was basically to check the electric connection, the sewer and the water connection. Uh, since we've adopted the, the urgency ordinance, we have issued three of these temporary land use permits. All three are still being used by the applicants. Also, the six residential units that were allowed in the service commercial are also occupied. So we have a couple of options for you to consider tonight. Uh, one would be to allow the urgency ordinance to expire on October 23rd. Uh, if this is the, if this is the direction by council, we'll be in the process of informing the permit holders that they will need to start thinking about, finding other arrangements for the folks who are living in RVs on their private property. Uh, the second option for you to consider would be to extend the ordinance for one more year. Um, along with this option, if the council elected to do this, we would come back in the next, uh, few months with some, um, ideas to maybe extend some of these provisions permanently. Uh, we would come up with some ideas. We just have a couple of examples. Maybe allowing the habitation of RVs for one year at a time with a permit for certain people under certain circumstances. Also, since, uh, this urgency ordinance has been adopted, the building code has changed to allow tiny homes. Now, those are tiny homes that are built on permanent foundations. They're not RVs. So if, uh, the council elects to do option two, we would extend the ordinance. I would bring it back at the next council meeting for, um, and Jose might want to clarify if it would need two readings since it's an urgency ordinance. But it would be on the next, yeah, it would be on the next council meeting for adoption. Um, and then again, we would come back in the next few months with some ideas on how maybe we can change some of the zoning and some of the, uh, provisions to allow temporary housing. There's still a lot of other emergencies occurring. You know, I could see this being, uh, you know, related to COVID if someone had to quarantine. I mean, there's other fires occurring. So it would be the council's decision in the future, if you do a select option two, to consider things like, hey, allowing people to live in RVs for one year periods with, you know, a building permit, uh, maybe with the extension of an additional year. So, uh, that's, that concludes my report. Uh, there are two options and we're here for questions.
Thank, thank you, Kevin. Uh, councilmembers, any questions? Jason, please.
Hey Kevin, just a couple of quick ones, and I didn't get to get you these ahead of time. So just your best guess off the top of your head is fine. Um, have we received any notable complaints related to this, um, temporary housing standard that we've had over the
We have not.
Years?
We have not. I asked, uh, Rafael that question today and there has been no complaints.
Do we see any issues with the way it's written now in congruence with the, um, the ADU ordinance loosening by the state?
The only thing I really see that might, with the ADU, we might want to take a look at our zoning specifically as to the tiny homes. Um, I think the zoning is okay, but there may be some opportunities there to, since, since the, uh, tiny homes are allowed as ADUs now, we might want to change, tweak a few things in the zoning to encourage those if, if that's the direction. But I don't see any real direct correlation with the change, recent changes in the second unit laws. This is really about temporary, uh, and it's related to disaster.
Last question. Do you see any unintended consequences regarding, um, what's perceived as homeless people parking their RV in maybe inappropriate places? Does this have any unintended consequences that may afford protections that's causing frustration there?
Well, I would say that first of all, it has to be on private property. And anything that we would propose for the council's consideration would include, uh, some sort of standard where maybe it's not visible from the street. It's a certain distance from property lines, and I'm not sure what those are. We do have some of those in the current ordinance that still may make sense to carry through. But, you know, I, I don't see a direct correlation. It would, you know, the, the owner of the home would have to, uh, agree to it, of course, and it has to be on private property. So it is something to look at, but I think with the proper standards that we could put into this ordinance and because if it ends up getting into the zoning ordinance, we could probably mitigate anything, uh, like that.
Thank you, Kevin. That covers my questions. I appreciate it.
I had the same concerns as Jason. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me just ask a question. Um, I'm sorry, Kevin, go ahead, finish.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Gus.
No, I just, I just had a couple of questions. Um, this went into effect, uh, in 2000, I think it was July of 2017.
Yeah.
And it was supposed to be done with, uh, somebody from the city going out to inspect to make sure that the sewer, the electric, everything was hooked up properly. And, um, I think we were going to some stick to put on the window to show this past the city's inspection from that.
I can't hear you.
You faded, you faded out there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sorry about that. I feel like I'm screaming. So I, I just want to make sure that if we continue this, that we're going to go out and we're going to double check those, those units to make sure that there hasn't been any change to the way they've been hooked up to this, to the sewer and to the water and to the electric.
We did drive by them just to kind of see if they were still there. We didn't do that level of inspection. And I have been talking to the building inspector about it and he had a few ideas, um, as well. But, I mean, we could take the three that are currently active and say, um, we need to do a reinspection. If, if that's the direction.
Well, when I say an inspection, I mean, we just want to make sure that the, the, the sewer isn't draining down the driveway. You know, that the seals are still good on them. And, uh, I, I think just a visual inspection before the rainy season will probably go a long way with my concerns.
Okay.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, one of the points of discussion when we first passed this is that, you know, um, with, even though people are, are using them, um, you know, for their primary residence. I mean, RVs are not designed for year round, year after year use. They're, they're designed for intermittent use. And I think that that's, you know, something that's important to keep in mind. But I would be perfectly happy tonight to extend this and then have a, a further discussion. I think that the, the points that, uh, Kevin brings up are really important is, is that I, I think we kind of, we need to, figure out, you know, what, what's our, what's our density goal or what's our, you know, what problems is this all? And then do we need to look at the changes in ADU regulations and our tiny house and our tiny, you know, our current tiny houses and, you know, what are people asking for? And so I, I think that this is a good time to, um, to, to look at, to look at all of that and, and, and because I, I think that the atmosphere has changed in the, in the last two years since we, we, or since 2017, since we first did that. I'm also apprehensive when I think we're actually about to come right into our, um, our formal fire season, not, you know, just the preamble that we just had. And so I'm kind of apprehensive about, um, pulling this now because I think that we're just going to end up, I mean, we, you know, uh, we could end up having to pass another emergency ordinance anyway. So, um, I'd be happy to, you know, give it another year and then give ourselves some time to, you know, really look at our zoning and really look at, you know, what are we trying to accomplish here and what, what can we do? So that's, that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Well, I can support that too. How about you, councilmember Cruz?
I do. Uh, I, I do also. Uh, however, I just want to make sure that we cannot say we don't have staff to follow through on inspecting or checking this, you know, these places and so on. Because, uh, it, it is our responsibility to make sure that everybody is complying, uh, with, with the law and that, uh, neighbors are not impacted, uh, by any unusual or not recommended activity in neighborhoods. That's, uh, my, my concern. Thank you.
So you'd like it, you'd like them to go out and take a look, see? Make sure everything's, yeah, okay. All right. Well, is that direction enough to staff?
It is. Uh, we'll bring it forward, um, on the next agenda for adoption.
Okay. Well, with that being said, let's move on. Uh, do we need a break, folks? Anybody? Nope. Okay.
Let's just muscle on through to the end here, Mr. Mayor.
This sounds good. How about, uh, councilmember, uh, Brigham? Somebody want to send her a text?
I'm back.
There she is. Okay. All right. Next item is, um, just give me a second here. Next item is item number 15, a resolution to submit a per capita grant and enter into an agreement with the State Department, California Department of Parks and Recreation for Disbursement of Funds. And this item, I think, is Kevin's?
It is, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, this, this item is a resolution authorizing the submittal of this per capita grant. That's what they're calling it. So the, the amount that we would be awarded is based on our population and that comes to about just over, uh, just under $178,000. Uh, it does require a local match of 20%, which would be about $44,000, which we're proposing to use Measure M funds for this. Uh, we've had numerous conversations internally with Mark and David and Hector and Suzie, um, to try to figure out what projects would be best. We initially, Hector had a list, a long list of small projects. Then we learned that that's a lot more paperwork and require an application for each one. So we whittled it down to three big projects. These aren't the only ones that could be under consideration, but, I'll just walk through those really quick and we're just trying to get your direction on what you think about these three projects. Uh, rebuild the playground at Ferber Park. Uh, this would construct a full sized basketball court there and volleyball and possibly a pickleball court. There's some irrigation and drainage work and ADA work that would also be associated with that project. Drinking fountains, uh, and maybe picnic tables and, and lighting. Some of it, it'll change, of course, when we start getting into numbers, but the, the gist of that is really to construct a full sized basketball court at Ferber Park. Uh, the next one would be the reconstruction of the basketball park, at the basketball court at City Park. Uh, I don't know if you've seen that lately, but it's, it's in pretty bad shape. The pavement's kind of torn up. So this would remove the existing concrete, replace it, install new hoops, and repair some of the drainage, a new drinking fountain, uh, a new fence around it and possibly some lighting. Not big outdoor lighting, but just some smaller pedestrian lighting for the park. Uh, the third idea that we came up with was remodeling the scout cabin at City Park. Now that is not shown to be, uh, continued use in the master plan. But the master plan does go out quite a ways and has a lot of, uh, expensive items in there that, um, it kind of ambitions a new building there with bathrooms and an education center, which is all great and we would love to have. It's just the timing of that is uncertain. So we could remodel that building. One nice thing about this idea is, you know, it could potentially provide some revenue for the city. People wanting to rent it out for classes and things like that. So, uh, Mark's been involved with this and David too. So, uh, that's, those are kind of the three that we came up with. We have a little bit of time. I think the, uh, the applications, we have a little bit of time. So if there was some other ideas, we could explore those and bring those back right away. But, um, that's kind of what we have on this. So we're interested to hear what you think about those.
Well, when you, when you picked these three projects, did you put any, uh, numbers to them? Is 222,000 going to be enough to do, um, the one that we pick out here?
Well, we, we didn't, we have like ballpark numbers, you know, based on Hector, uh, Hector's, um, estimations. But the scope of these projects would be adjusted probably. We don't know exactly, but generally speaking, I think we could, we could accomplish most of what I did, what I described in each one of those projects. And Mark, I don't know if you have anything on that?
No, again, we would adjust the, the scope of, of the project to the budget.
But we're not locked into, to these three. We're not locked into anything, basically.
There are some parameters with the grant. Generally speaking, you know, these, these meet those parameters. It can't be for maintenance or an operation. It has to be kind of for the expansion or reconstruction of, of existing parks.
Yeah. And pickleball is, uh, apparently, uh, hot on everybody's radar now. Councilmembers, would you like to weigh in on this? Mary Ann, thoughts?
Um, no, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with moving ahead on applying for the grant. Which things we pick, that we can do a little bit later, but, um, any of the three would be fine with me.
Well, I think we need to, to pick one of these to include in our grant application. So we are kind of
Then I would pick probably number two.
Councilmember Bagby?
So would I. I'd pick number two. Yeah, City Park needs some love.
It really does, yes.
Well, you know, um, I was talking to, uh, Mark. He's there. I was talking to him the other day about the pickleball, uh, courts, uh, and being put at City Park. And, you know, that City Park right now, that basketball court is used a lot. Um, you go there in the evening, there's a bunch of young kids out there playing basketball, shooting hoops. And, and I could just, uh, see a bunch of Dell Webbers looking to do pickleball and a bunch of, uh, uh, young fellas playing basketball. I can't imagine who's going to win that one. But, um,
First come, first served.
Yeah, there you go. Um, so I, you know, I could go with either one of them. You know, number three, I'm sure, uh, you know, if we came up to the table with a couple hundred thousand and said to the Rotary Club, you built this back in the 40s, would you like to help us restore it? You know, it's possible they can kick in a couple bucks as well. So anyhow, I, I talked over everyone. I'm sorry about that. Uh, councilmember Cruz, what are your thoughts?
Number two.
Kevin, uh, I'm sorry, Jason?
Yeah, number two works well for me too.
Okay. And, but again, we could, we could change this later on or we locked into it once we put it in, Kevin?
We, well, we could. The application's not due for a little while, but once getting the direction tonight, we're we're gonna start, you know, filling out the application based on that project. So ideally, we wouldn't change it. I mean, if, if you had a great idea in the next week or, you know, a couple weeks or so, we could, we could talk about that, but um we're kind of trying to get the, the, the project scope, because that's gonna shape the application.
Okay. Well, um, there's a resolution, if somebody would like to offer it?
Well, I'm still awake, so.
Two fifty-three.
All right, um. You got for the resolution by title only, uh, resolution of the City Council of City of Cloverdale approving applications for per capita grant funds.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, Irene, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Well, that looks like all of the, unless I missed something, that looks like all of the new business. And uh so why don't we turn our attentions to um to something else?
How about subcommittee items?
There you go.
And uh the first one up is Finance, Administration, and Police, and our next meeting is uh October sixth.
Sounds good. And how about the Planning Sustainability? That's me, and our next meeting is October the twentieth. Public Works, councilmember Cruz?
Uh, actually, I should say that the pickleball, it's only a drawing of lines, so we don't have any expenses there. Uh, and so the next Public Works, September, September the second just happened, so November twenty-fourth. And uh I'll go ahead and also say about the school, uh, October nineteenth, and we have been having some very good conversations with the superintendent.
Good. And how about the uh Fire uh City Subcommittee?
October the twelfth, uh, five-thirty on Zoom.
Good, and you're gonna do uh um the open space? I think Kevin put that on your agenda for the meeting, okay? The Homeless Community Advisory Group, uh, we're still working on a date for that. Um, trying to get through all the rest of the things that are going on. Council reports verbal, anything? Melanie, we got yours?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I did submit it in writing, and I'll just um reference one of the items on there, uh, which you, I want, make sure that you're aware, but if you have any questions for me, you can ask me tonight or um, you know, anytime in the next couple of weeks. But at Rush River Watershed Association, we did have the City of Rar Park withdraw from membership, and there is um, there are a couple of sticking points. Um, they, they voted to um make an immediate exit, um, but the, the attorney at the City of Ukiah is um saying that that actually may not be part of the MOU, so we're investigating that. And we will also, uh, because their uh withdrawal was agendized and voted on without any warning or um any communicate, prior communications with them, we will uh. Council meeting to um, um, address some of the misinformation that was in the staff report. Um, so it will be um hopefully an amicable, on our side, it's an amicable split and welcoming them back anytime they want to come back, but it is something that I want to make sure, make sure that the council was aware of, just in case uh you heard about it, um, yeah, heard, it came back around from anybody else. So that is an issue that uh we're dealing with at Rush River Watershed Association.
Well, I'd like to ask you why they withdrew, but by the same token, it's late, so.
It's late. I'll be happy to talk with you at Plank at some point over coffee and in, under sunshine.
Long overdue. Um, information, informational reports, uh legislative reports, anything? City manager? I'm sorry?
No reports, Mayor.
City manager, city attorney reports?
Uh, just a quick update, Mayor and Council. Uh, staff has developed some voter education materials regarding uh Measure R. Uh, those were sent to you. Those are uh materials that you can, you can share with your, your constituents uh and or interested parties uh about um uh the, the intent of uh Measure R. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. There will be uh an additional uh voter ed- education pamphlet that will be sent to you uh shortly that will uh provide additional uh voter education materials as well.
Thank you. Uh, discussion possible direction related to COVID nineteen? David?
Mayor, members of council, I, I, real, real quick update, I received a, a call from uh councilmember Brigham today in regards to uh the eviction protections for tenants related to COVID, and just wanted a real quick update. On August thirty-first, Governor Newsom did uh pass new legislation referred to as the COVID nineteen Tenant Relief Act of twenty-twenty. Uh, what that provides for is that for rent due between March first twenty-twenty and August thirty-first, you, uh, a resident cannot be evicted for inability to pay rent um if they submit a signed declaration to their, to their landlord within fifteen business days. Obviously, we're after that period of time, but for rent due between September first and January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, you cannot be evicted for inability to pay rent if you submit the signed declaration to your landlord within fifteen days and you pay twenty-five percent of the rent due for that entire five-month period. Um, and you are required by April thirtieth to pay your rent in full. So there are some provisions uh that uh are put in place to uh reduce evictions or provide protections for tenants uh under current COVID uh pandemic. And I'll, I'll push out material uh to council that you can, you can read and review regarding those uh specific eviction protections as well as the um, the form that a tenant would have to uh submit to their, to their, their property owner.
Thank you, David. Um, next is um future agenda items, City Council endorsement of ballot Measure BB. I thought we did that last, um, at the last City Council meeting, when we had the presentation.
Well, I think.
Go ahead.
I know, I think we had the presentation, but we did not um, we did, we did not take any action to consider endorsing Measure BB as um an entire council.
Okay. Well, then I guess we should put that on the next agenda.
Mayor, councilmembers, there's really, there's two options for you relative to endorsement of the ballot measure. Uh, staff can certainly bring it back to endorse at the council, uh, which we would do by resolution. The, the alternative uh to full council endorsement is to do it as an individual council member, which doesn't require full council approval. So it's really up to, up to the council. If you want us to bring it back, we'll bring it back by uh by resolution to endorse ballot Measure BB, uh, or alternatively, uh, council, individual council members can endorse the measure uh independently of the full council.
I already did that. I already endorsed it and sent it off.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Sure did I, yeah.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, on, on ballot Measure BB, since it is the sole source of uh street revenue for the City of Cloverdale, I, um, I, I think we should uh consider it as an item where it, it's beneficial for us to either endorse it as, as, as a council or not. I think uh other, yeah, other ballot measures, it's great if they get all of the council members or, you know, majority of the council members, but on this, because of, it's a revenue measure that we are dependent on for Rotary, for in-city road repair, and to qualify for matching funds at the state and federal level, I think it um, it speaks more strongly if um, if the council is willing that, that we say the entire, that the, the city council supports it.
Well, I thought BB was um.
Oh, wait, BB is the.
BB is the Sonoma County healthcare.
BB is the hospital, you're right.
Right.
You're right, I'm sorry. I'm, it is late, I am getting tired.
Okay. Well, I've already endorsed BB. And um, uh, I, you know, my suggestion is we do it individually, you know? I mean, there may.
I've already endorsed that as well, yeah, and, and um, but it's interesting because I, I, as, as easy as you, well, now that I'm talking about the right measure, um, it's interesting because I am seeing some pushback from folks in Windsor who are saying, oh, well, nobody uses that hospital and nobody needs it. Um, because, and saying, well, you know, the, the hospital district was created before Windsor was ever, was even incorporated and things like that, whereas, you know, those of us who live in Cloverdale and who've gone to that hospital and visited people in that hospital and people in Healdsburg now, it's used all the time. So I'm not sure it's as big of a slam dunk, though, as we might assume it is. Um, even though, you know, to me, why would you want to pay a partial tax, parcel tax in perpetuity and get nothing for it? Um, there is some pushback, so maybe we think, consider, we should consider that before we, you know, do, do, we, we, we think we don't need to vote on it as a, as a council.
It would be, it would be a pretty easy vote. I mean, almost, most of us have already endorsed it individually, so it's not gonna take a whole lot of time. It can come back, I guess.
And, and like, did we vote, and Gus, did we, I'm, I'm sorry, it is like, or did we vote to um support um the, the road measure as a, as a city? Am I, am I mistaken? Did we do that?
I, I can't remember.
Jason's nodding, I can't, yeah.
Well, ca- council received a presentation uh by the director of uh SDATA and, and did uh voice their support, I believe, for Measure D. What we did not bring forward at that time is council's consideration is a, is a resolution of the council endorsing uh Measure DD.
So forgive me for confusing BB and DD. But yeah, I, I, I thought, I'm sorry, when I was skimming through this earlier, I thought we were talking about DD, and, and that's, that's why I would like to see us pass a resolution and, and have the entire city support it, because we're so financially dependent on it. We need to send a message to our, our voters and, and just let, let them know that um this is what's at stake.
Well, here, here, here's the thing with, you know, I, 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 I don't want to see the city council just go ahead and, and, and endorse BB um and just send it out without taking feedback from the community.
Okay, I'm fine with that, but how do you feel about, how do you feel about DD?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna support that as well.
But should we support, because we are financially dependent on it, I think it's a different issue, and I think that, and, and honestly, I thought that, so since we're discussing future agenda items, I would like to see us pass a resolution and support it as a council.
DD?
DD.
Okay.
How about?
Is there support for DD?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, now how about BB? Can we, uh, you know? Do you want to individually send it, or do you want to bring it back to the council to have a public hearing so people could come and actually voice their concerns or their, uh, how they feel about the issue?
I'm open.
Yeah, let's give it a voice, make sure, when in doubt.
I'm open to participation, let's see.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just said, yeah, let's, let's bring it back, let the community weigh in, just when, when in doubt, let's give them a voice.
David?
We can still vote on it. We, we'd still, we'd still have time to hear, take public comment and then just, and vote on it that night, whether or not we're going to support it as a council.
Staff, are you okay with that?
Uh, what I hear from is that you'd like staff to bring forward two resolutions, one in support of ballot Measure BB with all the necessary findings to support that, uh, and to endorse that measure, as well as a separate resolution for DD along with the requisite findings to support endorsing that by the full council.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Seems like a lot of work for something we've already decided, but okay.
But, Mary Ann, we gotta let the public weigh in on it.
No, I, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. I, I can't imagine them opposing it, but you never know. It's, it's, it's not our dictatorship, it's, it's, they have to decide as well.
Correct.
That's right, it's their roads. They can decide if we'll have money to improve them or not.
Right. Okay, I just want to end the meeting with a special thank you to everyone, staff. Irene, thank you. Kevin, Suzie, Chris. Um, so the meeting's adjourned, and we'll see you October the fourteenth, twenty-twenty.
Bye.
Have a good one, you guys, bye.